Tacoma Park City Council, the order. Will the court please call the roll? I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
I believe there will only be five of us here tonight. Councilmember Daniels Cohen will not be here. Councilmember Smith will not be here. We don't have any additional agenda items this evening. I'll give you a short update on a couple of the upcoming agenda items in the following weeks. Don't forget that a week from this evening, May 27th, is Memorial Day, so city offices will be closed. And the council will be meeting on Tuesday, May 28th. And I want to remind folks that work session discussions on the 28th include a discussion of the bike share program and locations, the Board of Elections vendor recommendations, and a review of the living wage ordinance. The following week, Monday, June 3rd, we'll have a presentation on preserving the streetscape character of our historic neighborhoods, and work session discussions on the large grant process, and a continued discussion of this evening's work session discussion on revisions to the code on the peddlers and transient merchants. Monday, June 10th, we have a public hearing on proposed revisions to Title VI housing, just as we do this evening. And that's just a couple of upcoming items. At this point, I would like to open the meeting to public comment, and if I can point out to people that if you can hold your comments, if you have any comments for the public hearing this evening on amendments to the code, Chapter VI housing, or any comments on our special session items, which are the budget ordinances, please hold your comments for that. Anything else that you wish to comment on, including our work session items on peddlers and transient merchants, and the council discussion of Safe Grow Zone, I'd encourage you to make the comments now during public comment. And then just to remind folks that later this evening, when we do discuss the Safe Grow Zone, the council has not had a chance to discuss that yet, so that'll be a work session, and I'd like to make sure that we can have a good discussion among ourselves. So again, any comments on Safe Grow Zone, please make them now. Councilmember Siemens.
Mayor, I didn't notice, is there a sign up sheet for the housing code changes? Okay, so anyone who wants to speak on that could sign up over there.
Yes, over on that table.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, my name is Catherine Hirsch. I'd like to comment on something that's not on the agenda.
That's fine.
It's okay. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park, and I'm here, and we also have folks in the Environmental Committee tonight, to ask the council to consider in the future making a commitment to not investing city funds in the fossil fuel industry. We had an interaction, very prompt interaction with Ms. Ledlow this week, and found that as far as we can see right now, there are no investments, Tacoma Park has no investments as far as we know, in the fossil fuel industry. And so this would be part of a movement, well, I'll back up and say that what we're hoping for in the near future is that the city consider making a proactive commitment to not having any future investments in the industry, in the fossil fuel industry, and in fact, proactively working towards looking for opportunities to invest in the growing renewable resources industry. And this is part of a movement sparked by 350.org, an organization that is running a divestment campaign across the country, not unlike what happened in the 80s with the South African divestment movement. There are hundreds, there are, I think, 105, I have the data here, but 105 cities already considering, considering or have already divested from the fossil fuel industry, cities and states, and also universities. So it's a growing movement, and we would love to see Tacoma Park leading the way. And, you know, I'm a proud resident of Tacoma Park, and partly I'm proud because a lot of you all here and a lot of the residents here have often led the way in these kind of issues, but our feeling is that when it's time for national or international movement on these issues, the necessary movement cannot happen because the fossil fuel industry gets in the way. So we really can't have forward progress until we can weaken the power of the industry and the way we see doing that is divesting from the industry. So I hope Tacoma Park will be able to consider making that step and continuing to lead the way like we did with the Nuclear Free Zone years and years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
While I'm here, I'm also a fan of getting rid of pesticides in our lawns. I like dandelions, I like clover, and I love our creek, and I would like to see less pesticides in our lawn.
So you're supporting Safe Grow?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, members of the council. I'm Julie Tadio, co-founder of the Safe Grow Zone Initiative, and I live on Central Avenue. I want to thank you for setting time aside on your already busy agenda for a work session on our proposed ordinance. A couple of weeks ago, Catherine and I presented you yet again with our petition, and I hope that you've had a chance to look at it, to see the names of your Ward residents. Some of the names do include State Delegate Heather Mazur, as well as former Ward One Councilmember Josh Wright, and Montgomery County Councilman Mark Elrich, as well as statements we've given you, and even a video of support from other residents. We have presented you with a myriad of medical and scientific evidence. We have given you endorsements from the Rachel Carson Council, Beyond Pesticides, the Maryland Green Party. Catherine created a map of areas where we frequently have witnessed evidence of application of cosmetic lawn pesticides. Please note that many of these are apartment houses where residents have little say in what is applied to the lawns on which their children play. So not everyone has what one resident calls the right to quietly enjoy my lawn. I want to reply to a criticism that was posted on the listserv this weekend, that this petition has no weight to it, that people sign petitions all the time because it's easy to do and they never think about what follows. This is not true, at least in the case that we have found, we had lengthy, sometimes too lengthy, conversations with the people who signed. Some immediately signed it, they were excited about it, others said they wanted to see literature, we gave it to them. Some said, you know, I really support the Rachel Carson Council, but because of my job professionally, I have to go with the EPA. So people struggled with their decision to sign our petition. There has been no hidden agenda, as another person said. If you go to the petition website, it states specifically that we are seeking a ban, and now we've compromised with a limited restriction on the application of these pesticides in Tacoma Park. So I really hope that we won't trivialize those who have offered their support, whether it's in the form of an email, a petition, or showing up in person to voice their support of our ordinance. In reading the emails of opponents this weekend, I was concerned that in the determination to defer to state and federal government, no one has mentioned vulnerable populations, children whose minds and bodies are still developing and are particularly at risk, apartment residents who don't have the luxury of owning their own home, or Casa de Maryland workers who have no say in what landscaping products they're told to use. The 2010 President's Cancer Panel and the 2013 Maryland Children's Environmental Health Committee are just two that say, "We are not doing enough at the state or federal level, so sometimes local governments do need to act to protect citizens from overexposure to pesticides." Thank you.
Thank you.
Dear members of the city council, good evening. I'm Catherine Cummings of Safe Grow Zone Initiative and a resident of Ward Two. We're thrilled to be here once again. I want to talk about legislation that precedes our proposed legislation. Julie and I were initially inspired by the Ontario Pesticide Act of 2009. It started with a small town ban, and the entire province followed them. They won against major landscaping companies in the Supreme Court of Canada. In 2010, a study of stream health revealed that chemicals like 24D, dicamba, and mechoprop were dramatically reduced in the water. I want to point out that this is science, not emotion, that inspired us to act. The District of Columbia Water and Sewer Authority slogan is "Water is Life," which brings us to the little publicized DC law, the Pesticide Education and Amendment Control Act of 2012. Highlights: To further restrict the application of restricted use on pesticides on public use property near waterways, which just gets into private property, at schools, daycare centers, annual report on pesticide usage, requiring pesticide applicators to submit usage data, increasing the pesticide product registration fee, and amending the Pesticides Operations Act of 1977 to increase penalties. I've also told you about Green Belt Maryland. I met with the author of their sustainable land care policy, Leslie Riddle. Green Belt sits on much more public land, but if we pass something here impacting private property, they're very interested in following suit. Tacoma Park is about 80% private property, by contrast. Remember, Beyond Pesticides estimated that even if 10% of residents in area zoned residential in Tacoma Park are using pesticides regularly, lawn pesticides, Safe Grow Zone ordinance would prevent between 524.8 and 1,607 pounds of pesticides from entering our environment. But realistically, it's about 40% of residents who use lawn pesticides. Since 2005, cities and towns in New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut have surpassed Tacoma Park in local lawn pesticide restrictions, even under preemption resulting from intense pressure from pesticide lobbies. The former president of RISE, a pesticide lobby, justifies preemption thus. Local communities generally do not have the expertise on issues about pesticides to make responsible decisions. In a similar vein, in a statement from a resident in Ward One who opposes Safe Grow Zone Initiative, "State and federal governments have access to scientific resources that may better inform policy creation and administration; the municipal government simply lacks those resources." As if in answer to the lack of expertise and resources argument, San Francisco and Berkeley utilize the precautionary principle to craft local policy. Please consider the opportunity we have here in Maryland. Let's use it wisely and decisively. It is our right to consider the science and enact change at a very local level for local people. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, good evening. My name is Brian Higgins. I am a resident of Ward Two. Just wanted to bring, distill this to a small empirical observation as a person who raises bees. I have approximately 100,000 bees on my property. Over the last three years, I've been seeing some significant changes in the behavior of my bees, including one swarm, which is perfectly natural and a very extraordinary phenomenon to observe, but also two bee collapses related to the syndrome that we're all familiar with and which is happening now worldwide. One of the collapses of my beehive was very tragic. 60,000 bees came out of its box, and basically they ensconced themselves on a tree branch no more than 20 feet away from one of my hives. They had no way, no idea of how to return to the box. They have been thinking of all kinds of reasons why there is a reduction in the bee population worldwide, which is now almost on threshold of a catastrophic phenomenon in which bees have such a vital role in pollinating plants and our vegetables that it's related possibly to our own starvation in the future. My bees have now gone from 100,000 to about 20,000, and the last vestige of one of my boxes, I'm trying to do the best that I can to help to survive. They have thought that iPhones were responsible for this bee collapse syndrome, they have thought electrical wires, they have thought all kinds of things, but now they're really pinpointing it down to maybe specifically pesticides. Because from my observation, being familiar with the behavior of bees, they left this box and were so disoriented, they couldn't find their way back, and it was only a matter of 20 feet. It's the neurological systems of insects that are affected by pesticides, and I am convinced that it's pesticides that have basically reduced my aviary possibly to nothing, apiary, excuse me. I would ask that you would very seriously consider what's being presented to you this evening. What I'm giving you is a small, personal experience, knowing that I could scientifically base it if I needed to, and knowing that in time it will be revealed that this is a situation that involves chemicals that are in the atmosphere. My bees are only as clean, or let's say pollution-free, as the environment around them. When they forage, they forage within a two-mile radius, the same amount of radius that a sweep of pesticides can basically drift when used on a person's property. So thank you very much.
Mr. Higgins, explicitly you support Safe Grow?
I'm sorry?
Explicitly you support Safe Grow?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name's Sheila Patton. I'm a resident of Ward Five on Hudson Avenue. Sorry to see that my council member's not here. I'm a registered nurse, and I'm a mother, and I support and implore you to adopt the Safe Grow Zone Initiative. The research has been done and has, I believe, been made available to you on the council. The pesticides in question are unsafe, they're bad for our ecology, bad for our health. As a registered nurse, I'm in maternal infant health, and I feel comfortable saying that it's bad for pregnant women and for their unborn babies. It is the responsibility of our government to protect its citizens, especially the most vulnerable. Within my own household, there are certain measures I can take, and that I try to take. When I can, I'll buy organic, I avoid certain lotions and certain bug sprays and things like that, but I can't just keep my kids inside all the time. Part of the reason we live in and love Tacoma Park is that we like the parks. My son says it's called Tacoma Park because it has a lot of parks in it. He's still trying to figure out what Tacoma's on. We like the creek, and we like the culture. I heard Kojanamdi and Tom Shepard talking last week on the radio about how Tacoma Park was in danger of losing its street cred until some measures that y'all took last week. So let's, in that vein, move forward, do the right thing, and support the Safe Grow Zone Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council people. My name is Colia Braun Greiner, and I'm here to support the Safe Grow Zone. Many of us here in Tacoma Park have heard the phrase by Gandhi, "Be the change that you want to see in the world." And I have endeavored to do that by the many groups that I've been a part of or helped organize transition town efforts, common security circles, and most recently a nascent group organizing a village, in the Village Movement, to support our neighborhood and our community needs. But Gandhi said something else, which many of us have probably not heard, which is, I feel relevant to tonight's topic, "To forget how to tend the soil is to forget ourselves." I live in the Long Branch Sligo Creek neighborhood, also nicknamed Between the Creeks, which is a wonderful reminder that we live in a watershed. And while properties have boundaries, water does not. And it seriously concerns me that whatever is sprayed or put, applied on a neighbor's yard could flow not only into my yard, but into our watershed, into our waterways. And I sincerely support the previous mention of the precautionary principle in this regard, in terms of the impact not only on our environment, our non-human relatives, but also the children and animals and fauna that live in our wonderful neighborhood as well. And when I see the little yellow signs that pop up occasionally in our neighborhood where people have used these lawn services that spray chemicals on their property, and it says, "Do not allow any pets or children to play in the area for a while," it's really rather frightening, because it means, whatever moment that sign is there, it means it's really not a healthy environment for, as the old saying and sign went during the Vietnam War, "War is not healthy for living things and other children and other living things." I feel that those little yellow signs are saying the same thing. These chemicals are not safe for children and other living things. I'm also very sensitive that there may be neighbors in our community who sincerely want to keep their yards kept up and looking nice, but, and they may be either due to reasons of infirmity or other limitations, hire a lawn service, and this is their way of actually caring for the neighborhood. But that's where I think the community needs to come in and really take responsibility for promoting education and support of neighbors in ways that we can say, "Well, there's other alternatives, and here's ways that we can support you in pursuing those alternatives." So in closing, I do urge you to live the change you want to be and pass this ordinance of the Safe Grow Zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, council members, city officials, and citizens gathered. My name is John Robinett, and I am here to comment on the proposed Safe Grow Ordinance. I live on Central Avenue, where I have lived for the past 12 years. I am also the president of the Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood Association, but today I am here as the father of two young boys. And I stand in support of the proposed Safe Grow Ordinance for four reasons. First, as an environmentalist, just because a pesticide is sold at the lawn and garden center or used by the lawn service doesn't mean it's benign. There's a growing body of research showing that the agents listed in the proposed ordinance can have adverse effects on humans and other life. 24D, for example, has been linked to higher cancer rates in children and pets. There is also emerging research showing the effect of multiple exposures to multiple agents over time, including increased cancer risks. As such, I believe, I believe following the precautionary principle, as the proposed ordinance calls for, is a prudent approach. Second, as a property owner, some may argue that the proposed ordinance is overreaching or infringes on homeowners' rights to maintain their property as they see fit. This argument is misleading. Our yards are not closed systems or ecosystems unto themselves. We share property borders, rainwater drains from higher elevation property to lower, and winds carry all manner of organic material, seeds, leaves, and such, along with any human applied pesticides in uncontrolled ways. As a property owner, I have a right to not have my property treated with the secondhand smoke of a neighbor's pesticides. Further, there are multiple exceptions provided for in the proposed ordinance for situations that do call for pesticide use and no alternatives exist. Property rights are not an issue here. Third, as a consumer, each of my actions and purchases may seem small, but when added with all the actions and purchases of everyone else, the impact can be large. Oftentimes, our consumer choices are informed by what is merely convenient, not necessarily what is best. In the case of cosmetic lawn pesticides, we are making choices that are mostly about convenience. And fourth, as a father, my faith teaches me of the interconnected web of all life, and I am called by it to do everything I can to protect our environment, not just for my enjoyment, but for my children, so they may live and thrive in a world where they can celebrate the sacred circle of life and can live in harmony with the rhythms of nature. Pesticides have no place in that world. For these reasons, I urge you, Mayor Williams, and the rest of the council, to move the proposed Safe Grow Ordinance forward for approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Howdy. I'm Ryan. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park. I live in the Maitre House Coop, which some of you might know about, and you're all invited over for dinner, if you'd ever like to come. I'm also here in support of the Safe Grow Initiative. I am a research professor at Georgetown University in the Physics and Oncology Departments. And as a scientist, I see not just overwhelming evidence that these compounds are harmful, they're teratogens, mutagens, carcinogens, endocrine disruptors, but actually a complete lack of any evidence that these chemicals are safe at any dose for any creature. And that concerns me greatly. It concerns me also that we live in, I think, a fairly affluent, unaveraged community, and we live in the Anacostia watershed, so downstream of us, there are a lot of people who have been in much less privileged situations, and whose land and whose selves have been polluted by a large amount of effluent that flows into them. So I also think of it as a larger social justice issue that extends beyond merely our own community. Within our own community, of course, I'm also a parent, and I'm very concerned about the effects of these chemicals on children. My daughter has a very, very rare chromosomal difference and special needs, and so she's particularly vulnerable, but I think all children are. All kids like to roll around in the ground, and they have faster metabolisms and growing nervous systems than incorporate more of these chemicals. These chemicals are also generally known to bioaccumulate, which is problematic, so they tend to attach themselves to lipid substrates and stick around more than other things. That's because a lot of them are derived from petroleum, which is more lipid, has more lipid affinity than water affinity. Anyway, I very much am glad to hear that you are considering this proposal. If there's anything, you know, that you'd like to talk about, I'm certainly at your service. I wholeheartedly endorse it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Maxine Hillary. I live in Ward Five. I used to live in Ward Four, or was it Two? Three, anyway. I have no great love of pesticides. In fact, I abhor them. And I don't kill anything on my property, not one thing. Not a roach, not a millipede, not a spider, nothing. The staggering level of weeds growing on my property will attest to my out-and-give-a-flip approach to landscaping. And if any one of the manicured lawns in Tacoma Park lived next to me, they'd have called you 50 million times, because my weeds are hip high. And part of it is because Claire Garmin of the Friends of Sligo Creek Parkway once told me, "Don't touch your milkweed because it gets in the way of the butterflies." You know, the butterflies like it. I planted particular things all over that I researched to make bees, to bring more bees. I'm probably one of the few people who puts out a deer lick and says, "Bring 'em on." They keep the yaw bush trimmed. So with that, I oppose this legislation, and the reason I oppose it is because it is attached to a fine. And that fine and all of the enforcement is funded by my property taxes, which are already the highest in the county. So what I would prefer to see would be outreach campaigns, you know, education. Why is it always regulation? Why is it not education? And some people may need help if they want alternatives, and there's nothing in any of this, just like in our tree ordinance, that says, "Hey, we'll help you. We'll take some of this city money or money we collect off of fines, and we'll help those people who need help with invasive species, with bugs." Instead, it's a fine, and I cannot support that. I support educating and assisting people in safe ways that are alternatives to pesticides, but I cannot support something that comes with more regulation. You know, to me, it's almost as if, to fine a property owner for not falling lockstep into what we call this one voice of Tacoma Park, when there's a lot of voices in Tacoma Park that may fundamentally agree on a lot of things, you know, and finally, because I don't want to run over my time, we support a lot of things that, I mean, why are our animals and plants more important than the rest of the world's animals and plants? You know? I mean, we allow meat. Nothing is more polluting or damaging on every level you can think of than the meat industry, but we sell it here. Pretty, you know, we don't have anything here that says, "You can't plant invasive ivy. It's grown all over." But you can still go down to Home Depot and find it, you know? And so I guess I think to myself, you know, what's next? Do we prohibit cats because they allegedly hunt songbirds, you know, petroleum products? Foods with corn syrup? You can't smoke in front of your house in Tacoma Park? You know, certain cleaning products? Let's draw up a list. Where does it start? Where does it stop? When do we educate people to do the right thing and assist them in doing the right thing, instead of attaching something to it that makes it even harder for people to do it, and helps them find ways not to do it, to get out from under it? And if anybody wants to come up with legislation banning meat and poultry products in Tacoma Park for the myriad reasons that, and I used to work for this industry, I know firsthand, sign me up. But to me, once you start down that path, it gets out of hand. You know, and I think there are better ways to achieve exactly what the committees supporting this legislation want to do, but as a homeowner, it's like, you know, at a certain point, when do you have ownership of your property, and when are you supported in doing what's right, instead of regulated? Thank you.
Maxine, would you support, would you support the use of
You know, and I think there are better ways to achieve exactly what the committee supporting this legislation want to do. But as a homeowner, it's like, you know, at a certain point, when do you have ownership of your property? And when are you supported in doing what's right, instead of regulated? Thank you.
Maxine, would you support, would you support the use of taxpayer money to do the education?
Hell, yeah, I'd pay enough taxes. That I would.
Thank you.
But you always fine me for, you know, you can have a little bit of tree on my property.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Anne Van Ducci, and I live on Long Branch Parkway. I'm kind of thinking about, I guess, maybe a response a little bit to what she said. A lot of the research that I do is related to smoking cessation, tobacco control, things like that. And I think even 10 years ago, if anyone had proposed the idea of not allowing smoking in public places, you would get a similar response. You know, it's my right to be able to do things. I mean, it's, I should be able to do this. It's my choice. It's not affecting other people. And what we know from the research, similar to what we know from the research on pesticides, is that, in fact, it does affect other people. Secondhand smoke does to a lot of people and does have these really, you know, negative effects. And I think similar things can be said for pesticides. And in proposing that legislation, you know, saying that you couldn't do this, people said that it was ridiculous. And in fact, I lived in Japan in 2008, and you could still smoke in all public places there, which was shocking to me at that time, and it was wonderful to come back here, where that wasn't the case. So I think, you know, a lot can be said about government kind of needing to step in and say, "Hey, this isn't okay. We need to ban it." Obviously, in terms of education and educating people about the effects of pesticides and the application, that is helpful, but at the same time, we can say, you know, people know that smoking is going to kill them, yet still 20% of people in the United States smoke. Education hasn't really necessarily changed the behavior in that regard. In terms of fines, one of the ways that we best know to reduce smoking is to have taxes on tobacco products, to make it much more expensive. By making it more expensive, you see rates of smoking go dramatically down. So I think that in terms of the proposed plan to try to limit pesticide application by having these fines, you know, fines aren't good. People don't want to pay them, but the same can be said for traffic tickets. People don't want to pay those either, but when you have them, when you have traffic cameras, people generally slow down. And it's just overall, as a town, I think we can really take a big step forward and kind of provide an example for other communities by enacting this legislation. So overall, I support the Safe Grow Initiative.
Thank you.
I'm Naomi Edelson. I am here to speak in support of the Safe Grow Ordinance and do to its harm to people and wildlife. I am speaking as a mom of a five-year-old boy and a daughter of an 83-year-old father. And I'm a wildlife biologist. I work for National Wildlife Federation, but I am here representing myself, although I'm wearing the T-shirt, you can see. And I live on Erie Ave, two minutes from Sligo Creek in Ward Five. So I just want to touch on some of these points. I'm mostly going to focus on the wildlife, but I want to say as a mom and a daughter that, just like the professor said, that children are much more sensitive. And in fact, in a recent study of pesticides, exposure among children living in major metro regions in the U.S., traces of garden chemicals were found in 99% of 110 of the children tested. And that's pretty dramatic. And my father has Parkinson's, and while it's not definitive, there is suggested that there's a link with pesticides. So from a, that's the people's side. From a wildlife side, I just want to say, even though the proposed ordinance doesn't say this, but I'm proud to say, and another reason you could add to it, is that Tacoma Park is one of only 68 communities in the whole country which is a certified wildlife habitat community, which means that the residents and the public spaces have all come together to say, "If we have a minimum number, then you become a certified community, not just a backyard, but a whole community." And that's a really terrific response, which shows that the residents care about creating homes for birds, butterflies, and other important pollinators like the bees. But according to the National Audubon Society, 7 million birds a year are dying from exposure to lawn pesticides. And that any chemical that kills insects is potentially obviously harmful to birds because they eat the insects. And what's happening is, in these certified wildlife habitats, which I have one, a yard, you're trying to create caterpillar factories, in essence. You're trying to put in native plants that are really good to, for the caterpillar and the larval stage, and then at the butterfly stage, and you're trying to create these great bird feeders. And you're trying to bring in the birds, but then by applying the pesticides, you're ending up what biologists call a sink. And you're actually creating a place where, you're creating, a place you're drawing in wildlife, and then you're killing them through the pesticides. Pesticide use is pervasive in our environment. U.S. Geological Survey, major scientific arm of the U.S. government, did an analysis of 20 major river basins, and they found common lawn and garden pesticides routinely in the surface and groundwater throughout our country. So I really urge Tacoma Park to be a leader and to pass the Safe Grow Ordinance, and I would be proud to be part of this community to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tammy Girall, and I live on Jackson Avenue, Ward Six, Tacoma Park. I spoke last time, I think, and the time before, if there was one. My lawn was accidentally treated by scots when my son was 18 months old. I don't know if it's a coincidence, but he developed asthma, and, you know, we, he struggles with that. And, you know, I became aware of this issue then, because, you know, I obviously want him to play, and someone else mentioned too, we want our children to be free, and we don't want to be neurotically restricting them and saying, "No, don't go on the grass." And the kids do want to roll on the grass. But, you know, we have to protect them, and so it's this constant struggle. And if you're a parent, and you're really, and thinking about this, you really are struggling with, you know, allowing them to be free versus protecting them from pesticides. So I just want to say that I am very much in favor of this initiative, and I hope, I hope it goes through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Theodore Scorato, and my family rents a business on Orchard Avenue. So I wanted to speak too, because I am here all the time. I grew up on Elm Avenue. I'm actually shocked that, I had thought this was already sort of done here. I come to Tacoma Park all the time for guitar lessons, ukulele, dance class, and all my dear friends who live here. So, so the other day, I was at Tacoma Porch, which I don't know if any of you got to, but here we were, listening to a great band, and my kids are right there on the grass playing, and I see my daughter, I have two daughters, and one is holding up a wild strawberry, and she is heading it right into her mouth. And I go running over, and I'm like, "Stop!" And two other kids from Tacoma Park, some good friends, come running up, and she goes, "Why?" And I said, and we three actually say, "Pesticides." Because we don't know, I don't know what, this yard looked really nice, too. I mean, I have no idea what was done there. So I know that you guys got sent the link to the Maryland Children's Environmental Health Progress Report, which I think is really important in looking at the sea of chemicals that our children are exposed to every day. And so I hope that you'll take a look at that in detail, because I think it outlines the situation very clearly. Now, in the United States, we have pesticides approved that are banned in Europe. We are still approving pesticides, which are currently being banned right now in Europe, like especially the neo, the one, yes, thank you. And it's kind of mind-boggling as a parent, as a citizen, to even read the news and see that. And I just want to bring up what happened with lead, when in the '30s, we had lead being banned in several countries, and it took us till like the 1970s to ban it and paint here. I mean, I think that we just lag way too far behind, and we need to take action at a local level, because federally, that is going to take years and years, and it is our children who are at risk. It is our children who are affected. We almost rented a condo in Manor Circle, actually, just a few months ago, and the realtor said, "Oh," he said, "Look at that nice yard." And I looked out, there was four feet of concrete, and there was five feet of the most greenest grass you ever did see. And I thought, "Oh, I guess I'll get shoes that'll go outside." Does that mean I have to go? Or, oh, I have 30 seconds. Okay, perfect. So I, I'm not used to that. So, and, you know, one of the things that this report mentions was that study, and there are so many studies, but that showed that the levels of the D, ah, I'm not really taking, reading my notes well, but the pesticide, the D4 stays on your, yes, stays on your carpet at detectable level for up to a year. So I thank you very much, and I hope that my child can eat a wild strawberry someday from my yard.
Thank you.
Could you come back up? Hi. You don't know me, but I just wanted you to know that your dad is one of my very oldest and dearest friends.
Oh.
And I see him about once a month.
Oh.
So I'm in one of that, his men's group.
Okay, I'll tell him. Frederick Schulz.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Darcy K. Hall. I live on Central Avenue, and I'm a strong supporter of the Safe Grow Initiative. Basically, I will keep it brief, but I think, contrary to what a previous speaker said, I think it's an extremely reasonable and well-written initiative. I think it shows a lot of flexibility. It addresses the education aspect, and I think really it could be a lot stronger, particularly given the environmental bent of this community. So I think that most pesticides, because they're used largely for aesthetic reasons, are really an unnecessary thing. I'm actually a landscape designer. I have many clients who have spectacular, beautiful yards, and we do not use pesticides on them. There are many organic alternatives, and I just don't think they're necessary. So as a famously progressive community, I frankly can't believe we're lagging this far behind all these other states and Ontario and all the other places people have mentioned tonight. I think we are 45 minutes from the Chesapeake, one of the most polluted bodies of water, and it's just incumbent on us to do what we can in our small way as a progressive environmental community. Thank you.
Hello, Mary Rooker, 804 Larch Avenue. I support the Safe Grow Initiative and the precautionary principle. I understand opponents who resent feeling that they are unable to do whatever they want. I really do. Honestly, I'm convinced that these well-meaning opponents don't understand, don't know, or don't believe the serious consequences of these pesticides. Most people assume that if it's sold in the stores, it must be safe, or it just can't be that bad if it's bad, you know, really, come on. And they don't understand how far we do lag behind other countries and how we don't use the precautionary principle with pesticides or anything else in this country. For a long time, DDT and other pesticides were used before we realized the full scope of the damage they do. Oops, sorry about those thalidomide babies, you know, really doesn't go over very well. Truly, the science is already frighteningly clear. We know how damaging these pesticides are. We just don't know how damaging. But it's already bad enough. We cannot afford to wait until even more harm is known. We already know too much. The hour is already late for action, so please don't delay. If you want to make it stronger, I'm in favor of that, but please, no more compromise. We just can't afford it. Education alone hasn't worked on any other issue, and it won't work alone on this one either. If the consequences weren't so severe, honestly, I'd be willing to give it a try, you know, that education route, even though I know it won't work. But the consequences are far too severe, and failing to do what's effective when lives are at stake is not an option. Voluntary controls don't work, and this ordinance is tame enough as it is. I know you've seen already a lot of science on this, but I think epigenetics has been left out. This emerging science shows that DNA switches are turned on and off by environmental triggers. So the damage to us and our children now will affect generations to come. Elizabeth Wallace couldn't be here, but she asked me to convey her support. And I thought I had one other thing, but can't remember it now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Pierceall, and I live in Ward One, and I am here to support the Safe Grow Initiative. I'm actually very proud of it, and it is a long time in coming. I don't think the human species has the right to pollute the earth for all living things, and I think we are part of a circle of life. And we are, our culture is so tremendously disconnected from the natural world that we are destroying it. And this makes you think. It makes, you suddenly become connected to the natural world, and in that, it is extremely important. And so I would say it's late in coming, it's tremendously needed, it is an important symbol as well as it will make a difference. And my concern is that it is too weak, and that there should, people should have a chance to expand this list of chemicals. I'm an environmental chemist, and I do not underestimate the harm that these chemicals do in the environment, and their byproducts, and our inability as scientists to understand all of the ramifications of that. And so I would like to see us take a step on the local level and do what we need to do to first educate, as this is doing, and then to fine, if that does not work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Joe Edgell, 1001 Elm Avenue. I know you all know me, but what you may not know about me is that I spent all of 2011 in a detail, working on Capitol Hill, and one of the pieces of legislation I worked on a lot was the Endocrine Disrupting Chemicals Exposure Elimination Act of 2011. And in that capacity, I spoke with quite a few scientists. I spoke with community activists. I spoke with companies that made endocrine-disrupting chemicals, and I learned a lot of things. And I spoke specifically with scientists from the Endocrine Society. And what I learned is that unlike many chemicals where the dose makes the poison, right? The more you drink, the worse it is for you. With endocrine-disrupting chemicals, that's not the case. Smaller amounts actually have more of an effect because they better bind to these receptors within the human body. I also learned that chemicals mix with other chemicals. So it's not just lawn pesticides or herbicides, but it's plastics that you drink. Each of these chemicals have a synergistic effect, and that's something that we need to think about. And I also learned that children are far more at risk than adults. So you and I might be able to be exposed, but a kid walking across the lawn, that could affect them from years later. But don't listen to me. I'd like to read from you, and I hope I don't go over. I'd like to read from you a couple of quotes, and if I don't finish, I'll come back up afterwards and finish, because I think these are really, really important. This is from the Endocrine Society's statement on these types of chemicals, these pesticides and herbicides. "The evidence for adverse reproductive outcomes, infertility, cancers, malformations, exposure to endocrine-disrupting chemicals is strong, and there is mounting evidence for effects on other endocrine-disrupting systems. Endocrine disruptors have effects on male and female reproduction, breast development, cancer, prostate cancer, neuroendocrinology, thyroid metabolism, obesity, cardiovascular endocrinology. Results from animal models and human observations converge to implicate EDCs as a significant concern to public health. These complex mixtures enter the food chain and accumulate in animals higher up the food chain, such as humans, and exposure occurs through drinking water, breathing contaminated air, and contacting contaminated soil. The developmental basis of adult disease is impli, let's see, there's an implicit lag time between exposure and manifestation of the disorder. In other words, consequence of developmental exposure may not be immediately apparent early in life, but may be manifested in adulthood and during aging. So we're exposed as a child, and those diseases may not manifest themselves till you and I are the age that we are." They, and they, this is really, really, this next thing, really, really troubling. An example of germline transmission from one pesticide they studied is manifested by higher likelihood of metabolic disorders, tumors, and reproductive dysfunction the next four generations. So it's not just- So, it's not just this generation. That can be transmitted from mother or father four generations down the line, those genetic mutations that occur from these chemicals. And I have two last quick things, and I'll finish up. Our chemical, they say, these are the scientists speaking, they say, and I quote, "Our chemical policies at local, state, and national levels, as well as globally, need to be formulated, financed, and implemented to ensure the best public health." And for me, look, private property rights, I'm a big supporter of that. People should be able to do what they want to on their own property. But that ends at the property line, okay? And once they start to negatively impact me or my young neighbors who really shouldn't be burdened with the disease later on in life, their rights stop there. And I want to be protected, and I want you all to step in and protect my young neighbors because they're at greater risk than I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm making a special effort to be here tonight because I think parents of small children are particularly sensitive to the issue of chemical laws, law chemicals. But they're obviously underrepresented in the evening meetings. I supported the initiative for a number of reasons, but I'm going to mention just two The only argument that I see that makes sense against initiative or restricting law chemicals is the issue with property rights. But as, you know, just said at this moment, there are limitations to this. So, for example, I live in Central Avenue that, like many other streets in Tacoma Park, have no sidewalks. So, when I walk down my own street, I have to make a choice between braving the traffic or stepping around those little yellow flags with poison on my feet. So, I take the streets, of course. But my little daughter, who's seven, doesn't really have this choice. So, she steps around the grass, or she doesn't go, or anyway, it's a ridiculous situation. Makes no sense to me. The chemicals I spread out all to the curb. So, it's not like, you know, there is a safe passage for me. Maybe the town should enforce, at the very least, the fact that the chemicals should be restricted to their actual property and not going all the way to the curb. I don't think this is enforceable, but something has to be done about that. The other thing is that I'd like to plant vegetables in my garden. It's a very Tacoma Park thing to do, right? But I can't, because if I plant in there, my neighbor, you know, that's just the other side of the fence, sprays regularly, and it's going to spray over my tomatoes. My own tomatoes are not going to be certified organic. So, what's the point of living in Tacoma Park if I cannot grow tomatoes in my backyard? I think that's impinging on my rights as a property owner. And as I just said, I mean, there are limitations to this, and I think the rights of other property owners should be taken into consideration, too. So, of course, there's a tension always between, you know, personal freedom and the common good. I think you guys, on a regular basis, have to balance these two things. This case, the Safe Grow Initiative, I think is a very easy case. It's a low-hanging fruit because you're going to get a lot of benefits, health benefits, for very little disruption on people's lives. Just a little more, you know, a little more complicated way of getting rid of them alliance. That's it. And the other side of the balance, we have, you know, health. So, I strongly support the Safe Grow Initiative.
Thanks. And can you give us your name, please?
My name is Paolo Vidalke. I live on Central Avenue.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Lee Edmonds, and I live 7520 Maple Avenue. And I didn't come to complain this time. I came to thank Ms. Susan, the manager, because when I was up here before, when I was having that problem with them people smoking and coming into my room stifling me, I couldn't sleep. That went on for a long while. And the other manager that were here, she took my name there three times, my name and telephone number, said she was going to call and find out somebody. She never did. This lady took my name one time, and she got in touch with Ms. Linda Walter, I believe. And then she got in touch with Ms. Sutton, my resident manager, and they worked it out. And it's been at least two weeks or more since I smelled any smoke. I can sleep now. It is a pleasure living there again. And I want to thank this lady for it. Thank you all.
Hello. My name is Jessica Kessler. I am also a Ward 2 resident on Central Avenue. We have our contingency here tonight. I'm a mother of a two-year-old who likes to mouth everything, dirt and otherwise, and a six-year-old. And as a parent, I am most definitely in support of the Safe Grow Initiative. Then, I personally have experienced problems. I was in New York City during September 11th, and as a direct result of that, I got asthma, and my husband had thyroid cancer. And I personally have been affected by environmental toxins and think that anything that makes our world cleaner will be better. I've been asked, Catherine Cummings, to read a quote from a Tacoma resident who also happens to be an environmental engineer, applied toxologist and chemist, with 25 years of experience in environmental science and engineering, who also works with both government and private companies, as well as the EPA. And he's also a PhD in environmental engineering. His name is Dr. Krostowski, excuse me. And he wanted to support the Safe Grow Initiative because it is, he feels that it will bridge the gap between the EPA and the Maryland Department of Agriculture's enforcement of pesticides. He says that whenever an EPA approves a pesticide, it conducts a human health and ecological risk assessment that assesses the health risks to people or the environment who could be exposed to this pesticide. The approval is based on the behavior that is assessed. For example, the EPA will conduct a detailed analysis of how pesticide applicator will be exposed to the material throughout the workday. He goes on to say, "The problem comes in not every exposure scenario cannot be assessed. For example, a toddler crawling through a lawn and putting things in his or her mouth, a dog on a walk, a walk, stopping and chewing a bunch of grass, repeated applications of a pesticide by different parties, applications of more than one pesticide with synergistic effects," which someone mentioned earlier, "using more than specified on the label. These can all result in anticipated adverse impacts. What we call off-label use is a particular problem. The labels are highly detailed. People often do not take them, it's time to adequately understand everything on the label. How many of us read the label when we're applying these things? And failure to thoroughly read and understand these documents can really result in overapplication, inappropriate application, hazardous exposure, and inappropriate disposal. One way to limit these problems would be for the city to support the Safe Grow Initiative. My understanding is that Safe Grow would not only, not place any limits, I know, on the use of pesticides for public or environmental health purposes. For example, it would not restrict proper application to trees, to borders, or use of pesticides, but would only affect cosmetic impact. As a final point, many people in Tacoma Park grow fruits, vegetables at home, and many are interested in organic gardening, but both for food and ornamental crops. Limiting law, especially broadcast use of pesticides, will certainly help these folks stay organic and not be subject to the drift or runoff from places where pesticides are applied." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Ward 4. One thing I want to say about the Safe Grow Initiative is we need to put that in right now. I'm on medication. I'm on about 18 to 25 different medications. I don't know how the lawn pesticides and the other pesticides react to it. I do know that they are both chemicals, and they're both broken down by the system, some broken down by the liver. I don't know how that's affecting my health. Would I have gotten gangrene if I had never been exposed to chemicals in my life? I don't know. Maybe not. Would I have gotten Wegonone's granulomatosis if I was never exposed to these? I don't know. Maybe yes, maybe no. But we need to protect our lives as children and adults. You know, I don't, I'd like to see us do away with these pesticides as much as possible. And I support the Safe Grow Initiative real well. I want to see it done. We are a peace activity. It takes a community to raise our children, and raising our children is watching out for their safety also. And also, we make, we are a peace community with the, we don't want war with people. So, we should not allow war with our environment, our plants, our insects, and our animals. We should not allow war with that either. We should be out there preserving it. So, keep, I don't, so if you want to have a green lawn, find a safe way to do it. And save the clover, save the dandelions, and save the spiders. I love those. So, please save those because they benefit to our environment also. And also, I want to thank Kay Daniels for the worksheet on Kay Daniels Cohen in our city council meeting. And I missed her at the Celebrate Tacoma Festival yesterday. It was a wonderful time. You know, it was a wonderful way to celebrate my weekend, to celebrate Tacoma Park. That's my city. I had a wonderful time down there. But I did worry. I heard a lot of children down there, and I wonder how many, how much pesticides happens to be blown through the atmosphere at that particular time. What they do in their own yard is one thing with themselves, but they've got to think of their neighbors, too. You know, what they do in their own yard does not always stay in their own yard. We don't allow rock music at 3:33. We should not allow spraying pesticides. Pesticides are more, you hear the rock music at 3:33. I'm having to be on medication, pesticides, because I don't know how it's going to affect my medication. And that may be why I'm having problems now. I don't know. I hope to God not. And I hope to God nobody else gets it. Remember, the pesticides from coming in your window, they come in through cracks. They come in when you open the door. They come in when you open the window, even with a screen on. They come, sometimes you can come in through some air conditioning. So, please, think about it. Think about your own health. And remember Kay Daniels Cohen. Please get better. We miss you. We love you. And I want to give you a great big fat gold star. So, please come back to the meetings pretty soon. We love you very much, and I hope you, I hear your voice tonight. I miss it so much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lovelace, her gold star is on her chair.
The gold star's on her chair?
It's on her chair.
I'll also put a kissy kiss on it, too. I can't figure a way to give a hug out over the air, but maybe this will work if I hug the microphone. Kay, get well soon. We miss you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Pazit Aviv. I am in Ward 2, 7200 Treska Avenue. I do not come here before you with lots of statistics, data analysis, since I have no clue. I come to share my personal experience. I'm a renter, and so for the first couple of years of my renting situation, without my knowledge, my landlord, out of, I think, goodwill, had applied pesticides in my yard. And in my ignorance, I didn't give much thought to it. I tried to grow some partially, and when my son chewed the first batch, he developed these incredible hives, and I couldn't make sense of it, so I had to do some thinking. I'd requested the landlady to stop applying the pesticides, and she agreed, since, you know, it was kind of my business. I was renting the place, so she was very respectful. And within a year or two, I started seeing tremendous changes in my little yard, and I don't take good care of my yard. So, it's not due to my magical power, but you start seeing insects. And the best thing of all, you know those borrowing bees? Those that are pollinators, peaceful insects? They started swamping my yard. It was so beautiful. You should come to see my springtime yard. Everything is blooming, and those bees are humming, and the birds are around, and it's just not the same place. I'm telling you, it's not the same place. So, just sharing my own anecdotal experience with you. So, as you can imagine, I support the Safe Grow Zone Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. No second chance tonight. We're an hour into public comment.
I thought this was going to be at 9:10, but anyways, my name's Lyndon Wilks. I live in Ward 1. I have a grandson who'll be three in two weeks who lives in Tacoma Park. I'm not oblivious to concerns about children, but I'm strongly against this proposal. I think it's just oppressive kind of government. And I looked up the definition of the word principle. It says, "A comprehensive and fundamental law or doctrine." So, it seems to me if the city's going to go down this route, then they need to apply the so-called precautionary principle to almost any activity in Tacoma Park that could meet this criteria of an activity that threatens harm to the human health or environment, and so, you know, precautionary measures and so forth. If we're just going to apply this principle, so-called principle, in this particular case, it doesn't really meet the definition of a principle. It becomes really closer to an oxymoron, to call it a precautionary principle when it's not going to be applied on a consistent basis to all kinds of behaviors that happen every day in Tacoma Park that could harm the health of an individual.
Any other public comments? Okay, thank you all very much. We'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Before people leave, thank you all for coming out, regardless of your position. I very much appreciate, and I'm sure my colleagues do also, that you've taken the time to come tonight and that you have informed us of your opinions on the Safe Grow topic. I also wanted to mention, like Mr. Lovelace, that I very much enjoyed the Celebrate Tacoma Festival yesterday, including the Azealia Awards presentation. I think that having the Azealia Awards outside on the field was great, better than actually any of the prior Azealia Awards that I attended here in this auditorium. So, my appreciation to everyone involved in putting on the Celebrate Tacoma Festival, that includes the city, the recreation department in particular, the recreation committee, the Tacoma Foundation, and so on. And I apologize if I missed any major participants. And then I just wanted to keep my colleagues and anyone else informed that I have been discussing the Busboys and Poets operating conditions, which I mentioned at last week's meeting, with officials from the Washington DC Advisory Neighborhood Commission 4B. There's an ANC 4B meeting this evening, and someone who is a Tacoma Park resident close by is attending since I'm here. And it looks like the ANC is going to be willing to include Tacoma Park representatives, both neighborhood representative and the old Tacoma Business Association, given that, unlike OTBA, the residents don't have any standing in Washington DC in an attempt to, excuse me, reach a voluntary agreement with the proprietors. So, I just wanted to keep you up to date on that. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, was able to attend the Celebrate Tacoma celebration and also the Azealia Awards. I agree with Councilmember Grimes. It was an excellent event. It was a lot of fun, and I compliment the people who organized it, put it together. I did like the Azealia Awards being outside. We were fortunate that the drizzly rain in the morning stopped, and it was a beautiful afternoon by the time I got to the Azealia Awards. And then I'd also like to ask everyone to join me tonight in congratulating Pat Lovelace in the back on his 57th birthday today. Thank you.
58. 58, not 57. 58.
That was yesterday.
That was today.
57 was yesterday.
Yes, it is. Come and go on.
Easy come, easy go.
Easy come, easy go. It's like money.
Councilmember Schultz.
I also enjoyed the Celebrate Tacoma event. I think one of the problems was that the field, the venue was so large that hundreds of people who attended looked like it weren't, like it wasn't that many people. But in fact, there really were. I know I was there for the first hour and a half, and Greg Clark said, gee, by their count, they already had 550 people attending.
They had almost 1,000.
Almost 1,000 overall. And for an inaugural event, I mean, we need to understand that this is a, you know, a startup. And it takes time for these kinds of events to catch hold and become really well-known for what they are. And it's obvious that yesterday's was-- this is a, you know, a startup. And it takes time for these kinds of events to catch hold and become really well-known for what they are. And it's obvious that yesterday's was a success, and I think it'll lay the foundation for something that will grow and gradually evolve into something maybe a little different, but can do all kinds, this is sort of thing that could be all kinds of things to all kinds of people. So I think the people who spent so many hours working on this really need to be congratulated because, frankly, it was a, it was sort of like opening night on Broadway. You can put all the work into it and just have it be a bust, and this turned out to be a really nice thing. Second of all, I wanted to report on the State Highway Administration's meeting in this room last Wednesday, the May 15th, where they spoke about the bridge project on New Hampshire Avenue, the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway. This is a project that, the work has begun, contractor's on-site and has begun work. They said that Sligo Creek Parkway will be barricaded in about roughly two weeks from that point, which was the 15th. So say another week and a half from now, give or take. They said that the project is expected to be largely completed by the end of this calendar year, which would put it out at about six to seven, say, say seven or eight months to be on the generous side. They may, probably will not complete the milling and re-asphalting of New Hampshire Avenue after the bridge work is complete until spring, because they just can't lay asphalt. They don't produce it in the wintertime. So that work probably won't get done until, until the spring, the warm weather. But that will not prevent Sligo Creek from reopening. They'll reopen Sligo Creek when the basic work is finished, the bridge is built, and the new traffic signals are in, and the medians have been restored. But the, but, so that's, that's good news, because earlier it had been indicated the project might take a year, year and a half. We even heard from some engineers there that it was going to take two years. And so we'll, we'll see how it goes. They did say that they're going to confine the noisy work to the daylight and early evening hours, such as saw cutting of concrete or jackhammering. That work will not be done at night, but other work will be done overnight in the interest of moving the project along The detours are confined to state highways, such as Carroll Avenue and Ethan Allen. They pointed out to the, the, the question was raised, oh, how can Ethan Allen Avenue be a detour when itself is being renovated, if you will? And he's, the reply to that, and the answer was, was that that project's expected to be completed in about four or five weeks, such that the traffic will be able to go along Ethan Allen without a great deal of interruption. So that's getting done more quickly than had been originally proposed, if we believe what the S H A thinks will be the case. They could be wrong, of course. I'm only telling you what they told us. But they also readily admitted that even though there are detour signs, that each person who drives, you know, is going to seek their own way through the, the community when they realize that Sligo Creek Parkway is no longer a through street. And the, the, what happens in that regard really falls on the, on the city of Tacoma Park. It's really not S H A's responsibility. It's the city's responsibility to try to respond to the problem of possible cut-through traffic. And the city has, did announce that they will during the first few days after Sligo Creek Parkway is closed, the department, the police department will be there on-site, monitoring the speed limits, the stop signs on, on the neighborhood streets, to ensure that people are, at least if they're cutting through, they're doing it in a responsible way. And they said that if, in fact, the things, the problem of cut-through traffic gets to be even more severe than looks tolerable, then they'll, they'll be in a position to consider more severe kind of responses without, and we didn't get into the discussion of what those might be. So there's some, there's some, we're going to have cooperation here. And so that basically was the essence of the meeting. There weren't too many surprises, the stuff that we didn't already know, but I just wanted people to be aware of this. And I'll be happy to answer questions if somebody wasn't at the meeting and wants to get more information at a later time. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. I wanted to thank, in particular, all the Ward Two members who are here in the audience still. Thank you for coming out. And John, since you're Neighborhood Association President, I wanted to mention to you that there is funding outlined in the budget for work at Jackson and Flower Avenue. The neighborhood had requested some project design, traffic calming work there. So that's something we should follow up on as the budget goes to a vote later on tonight. And then the Public Works Director had also indicated a plan to do the planning work associated with where Sligo Creek Parkway and Flower go together. And so actually implementing that work is going to depend on schedules and workload and other things. But if we can move forward with that, that'll be something that the association and the city may want to keep talking about in the early stages. That's it. Thank you.
I'll also give my thanks to the people who put together Celebrate Tacoma this year, this inaugural year. I think it was a great effort. People have thanked various people who worked on that. I also want to acknowledge Tacoma United and also the Recreation Department Assistant Director Debbie Huffman, who was the, basically, the lead person on this, who really put a lot into it and made it happen. We also had another event this weekend that was a first in Tacoma Park, and that was Tacoma Porch on Saturday. I went around and heard music at a number of people's porches, and I think it was a real nice event. They decided to keep it compact so that people could walk around to all of the locations. I heard some discussion among the organizers about whether it should get larger or whether it should stay that same size, so it still is compact and walkable for people. I would encourage people to keep their antenna up for next year's Tacoma Porch event. It was a real nice opportunity to hear a lot of good music and see a lot of people. Also, last week, I was at the Council of Governments Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy Committee. It was a real good opportunity. It was a forum, and we had invited EPA District Three, I don't know what his title is, Administrator Sean Garvin. And we were also joined by Maryland Department of Environment Secretary Robert Summers and Virginia Secretary of Natural Resources Daniel Dominich. And it was a real good chance to talk about a lot of Chesapeake Bay issues and how to keep things moving forward to clean up the bay. And I'll just let people know that Wednesday of this week, I will be going to Rolling Terrace Elementary, its career day, and look forward to talking with a number of classes about how it is to be mayor of Tacoma Park and what that involves. It's always a very interesting conversation. And also let people know that this Thursday afternoon, there will be a swearing-in ceremony for the two newest Tacoma Park Police Department officers at 4:30 in this room. And I think that's all we have for council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
Just a couple of quick ones. As you are all aware now, the city's website switched over to the new website on Friday. Lots of work yet to do on it. We're working hard on that, but glad we're only maintaining one website instead of two. I appreciate some of the comments and observations that some of you have made. Keep them coming. The next thing I'd like to mention is also this past weekend was the library book sale. And although it was a little wet, they got a lot of books sold. I was helping wipe off, wipe off the books, but that was still a good, good event. I will, want to make a note about this coming weekend, for Memorial Day weekend. Because it's a Memorial Day weekend, and we're kind of in this still transition stage at the end of this fiscal year, the library and the community center will be closed on Sunday and Monday. So normally now, the library and the community center are open on Sundays, but for this particular weekend, for Memorial Day weekend, both Sunday and Monday, it'll all be closed. And just a reminder to the council, I will be out of the office Wednesday through Friday. Greg Clark will be the functioning-as-acting city manager.
Do you have a question?
I have a request from a resident that you reminded me of, which is if the City Garden Division could do some sprucing up around the city's veterans memorial across the street, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
And that's all you have?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Just more. We don't have any minutes to adopt this evening, so we will move to our public hearing. And this is a public hearing to hear comments on amendments to the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter Six Housing. And the acting city manager is going to bring over the sign-up sheet. We'll take anybody who's signed up on the sheet first, and then anybody who hasn't signed up who wishes to make any comments. We'll give you an opportunity as well. Okay, we have five people who have signed up. Ray Altavoe, followed by Brian Higgins, I'm not sure the name. Pazit Aviv and Keith Chamberlain. So, Mr. Altavoe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I almost didn't bring this along. I had two or three times the amount of things that I could say that I, I got the allotted time. I tried to make it very brief. I used to work in regulatory affairs. And this reminds me that I had a group, Residents Against Government Access. My neighbor was in the parade with me as Grandma Rage. And getting to that assembly area, we had to decorate four cars, and we had a, four slides. I was told to stop, and a policeman from the city of Tacoma Park pulled out a gun and aimed it at the back of my head and the back of my neighbor's head. It was elderly, and it wasn't timely to get her there at the beginning while we were assembling this. So I really say, hey, the regulators can just exceed what they do. I entered the rent control data in this city hall. When there was one computer, I would be called, called in to say work two hours, and I'd get here, and they didn't even have the computer set aside for me to do it. That's the way the regulatory office was running. The inspectors were not trained. They were constantly changing new inspectors, new inspectors, and getting trained. Finally, the county has improved the training. I say, you are now going to aim another damn gun at me. I have a group house. I have two people. One has an M.D. from Nigeria. One has been living there with eight years, and now I am going to be subject to more regulation. A few weeks ago, I had my apartment inspected. On the way into the apartment, the inspector had the audacity to push my shoulder aside. I didn't even get to comment about her saying, you don't have a light switch. The light switch actually was an outdoor switch and wasn't the typical indoor switch. I've been to court. I've tried to get her to re-inspect. All she did was reply and say, oh, we've issued you new citations. Of the three things she issued before, she wrote out five. And then when I tried to get the re-inspection, I've had seven. I feel like I'm being really kicked around by an inspection system. As I've only been able to look at these regulations in the last few minutes, since I picked up a copy here, you are going to have to have inspectors, and you're going to have inspectors who aren't accustomed to the many parameters that group houses require. Mark Eldridge, years ago, when he was on the council, they were looking at issues to deal with accessory apartment regulation and group housing. He said the group housing situation is so different from his own personal experience that he didn't want to include it. I say elderly people need to be given some consideration. In Loudoun County, elderly people don't have to shovel snow. Some provision, if this is adopted, needs to be put in place so that elderly people are recognized as having different rights. Thank you.
Brian Higgins?
Ray Altavoe.
Mr. Higgins still here? Okay, Roxanne Fultcher.
Hi. Well, I'm Roxanne Fultcher. I live in Ward One. I've been a Tacoma Park resident since 1999. Originally owned a home over in Ward Two. And I fell in love with an outstanding historical resource. Unfortunately, on Maple Avenue, it's very difficult to deal with. It's a three, or rather, a four-unit apartment building built in 1912. My husband and I have spent a lot of money bringing the house up to code. Three out of the four apartments were, had excessive number of violations. It wasn't being rented when we bought the property. So we received a letter from the city last year indicating that we could reset the rent on our units pursuant to the current code. And I just learned recently that the code that would have allowed us to reset our rent was going to be stricken from the code. And so we have been working, thank you, actually, several of you have helped us, and there is language now in the code that would allow us to reset our rent. When someday in the future we decide to move out, we, we live in the building with our granddaughters, one that was born there, and we have no plan to move, but we do someday in the future expect that we will not live there, and we would like to be able to set the rent at a fair market value, as we're now currently able to do with the current law, and as the proposed change would still allow us to do. But I am concerned about the, the future, because we were really surprised to find that the code was going to change. And just by chance, I'm not a real, I have a lot of email with work, and I don't always pay attention to it, and just by chance, I paid attention when I got the email indicating that there would be changes to the code. And so I did discover that we were in jeopardy of losing the right to reset our rent in the future when we rent. And so I appreciate the new language, and we do support that language, but at the same time, we are concerned about what the future for us in Tacoma Park is, given that we have, our property is at risk. And we, we don't want to be forced to move out of our property in the next three years and rent it to somebody and set the rent, and then move back in. I mean, that's silly. And, you know, we, but we are sort of at wits' end about what to do to retain the value of our home. We don't oppose rent stabilization, but we would oppose having to go back. The rent that we would be able to charge if we were forced ever to go back to where it was rented in the past would not even cover our mortgage. So we're in a, you know, we're concerned, I guess, is because of the lack of stability that the law has. And I'm not sure what can be done about that, but we would ask if there would be anything additional that could be done to the language that you have that would somehow make it, you know, I don't know, permanent. One thing that we had suggested is possibly trying to set the rent while we're living in the property, even though we don't plan to rent it. But thank you for your time, and I really appreciate the work that those of you have done to try to help us with our issue.
Thank you. Mr. or Ms. Aviv? I can't read. Was that?
She's lost.
Okay. I couldn't read the name, sorry. Keith Chamberlain?
Yeah, Roxanne's my wife, actually. So I signed up just in case you didn't have enough time to discuss some of the matters. And I just want to take a couple minutes. I don't want to take the full time. But I've had one issue, and I've discussed it a little bit with Seth, that unfortunately, last Wednesday, I asked for all the revisions to the housing, just so we could take a look at that and see if anything really affects us. And we can work with Seth and make sure the wording's appropriate for everyone, not just us necessarily. us necessarily. And I asked for that last Wednesday. Well, around 3:00 Friday afternoon, we got the list of the changes, and there's no track changes, so we don't know what difference from the old code to the new code. And it's pages and pages of stuff. And how can any, you know, person concerned about the code of our own city be able to go through that and live a normal life and be able to come and talk to you guys and give our thoughts, inputs, whatever, when the housing department is not responding very efficiently or being responsive to requests from the citizens? It sounds to me like, or seems to me, that having that stuff, the information disseminated a week before this type of meeting would be very beneficial for people like myself to be able to review that. And I don't think that's out of line. In my work, we say people have to get documents done two weeks ahead of time so it can be reviewed. And so I think a week or even a few days, not, you know, 3:00, the business day before the meeting. That's really not acceptable in my mind. One of the code changes that we were looking at, that I think the city's trying to encourage ownership of housing in Tacoma Park, and one of them says originally, for a two-unit building, that one of them can be under occupied and the other one rented. Well, there's some wording in there that doesn't seem very helpful, seems maybe hurtful. It says originally designed as two. If something was changed somewhere, I don't know what the original means, but it doesn't seem to be beneficial in this case. This is one of issue, one of maybe many things that could be modified in the existing proposed or in the proposals, to be just saying any two-unit building should be exempt. I know in the past, people have said that they would prefer to have up to four units exempt from rent stabilization, and possibly even within the historic district, because the upkeep of historic houses is much higher. You've got original windows, doors, and things like that that fall apart. And, you know, people try to upkeep them, but it's more expensive than, you know, a 1970s home, maybe, one more current. So I'd like you to take those things into consideration as well. And maybe, maybe we'll have some more comments as we review the documents further, so.
And we'll try and make sure that there's a strikeout version available to track the changes. And we're going to have another public hearing on the housing code on June 10th as well.
Yeah, great. Having a track date, this would be awesome. Make everyone's life a lot easier.
Yes, agreed. Is there anybody else who didn't sign up who would like to testify at the public hearing on the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter Six Housing? Okay. I will call this public hearing to a close. And as I said, we will have another hearing on June 10th, and then take up changes after that. At this point, we will go to our special session agenda, and this is the three ordinance surrounding the budget and tax rates. And the first one up is a second reading ordinance adopting the FY14 tax rate. Would somebody like to move that ordinance?
Move it. I'll second it.
It's been moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Are there any council comments on the tax rate? I made my comments last week. Just a reminder that this is changing the current tax rate, that's 58 cents, to 57 cents, and that is 3.16 cents below the constant yield rate. Seeing no council comment, is there any public comment on the FY14 tax rate? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call a roll?
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Mayor Williams.
Aye. That passes unanimously. The council now needs to vote to convene as the stormwater management board. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, seconded by Councilmember Mayo. All those in favor of going into session as the stormwater management board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in session as the stormwater management board. We have next the second reading ordinance adopting the FY14 stormwater management budget. This keeps the stormwater fee at $50? Fifty-five. Sorry, I didn't have the page in front of me. Would somebody like to move it, right?
Is it moved? Second.
Moved by Councilmember Mayo, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Any comments on the stormwater management budget? Any public comments on the stormwater management budget? Seeing none, will a clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith. Mayor Williams.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Next item is the second reading ordinance adopting the FY14 budget. We spent a fair amount of time on the budget and made a number of changes to the city manager's proposed budget, and included some things and excluded some things. Would somebody like to move that?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Mayo, seconded by Councilmember Schultz Siemens, since it was a tie. You pick. Any council comments on the budget? Any public comments on the budget? Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
That passes unanimously. A lot of hard work up front, and a lot of unanimity at the end.
May I say thank you to the council for all of the help that you gave in giving us good directions and questions, and particularly help. I want to thank Finance Director Yolanda Brooks for all of her coordination and work, and her staff's work. Really appreciated a good team effort.
Thank you, and thanks to staff very much. Okay, we will take a short break, and we will come back after the break for our two work session discussions. We have two work session items tonight. The first one is a discussion of proposed revisions to the code, Chapter 8.12, and this is the peddlers and transient merchants item. And we have staff here who will explain these changes. And we're also joined by the city attorney.
Good evening. Just a reminder, my name's Emily Cohen. And I've been working on the changes to the vendor code for the past couple of months.
Oh, and just before you get going, just a reminder that we're scheduled to have a continuation of this discussion on June 3rd.
So we've been reviewing Chapter 8.12, which was previously titled Peddlers, Canvassers, and Transient Merchants. This was in a response to the food truck pilot program that began last summer, and has since been extended three times and is now expiring on June 30th. I'm just going to go over some of the proposed changes. The first thing that we did was to clarify the terminology that we use to define the different types and categories of merchants. We've simplified it, so there are now three categories for which we will permit vendors: door-to-door, fixed-location, and roaming. The previous categories were junk or secondhand dealer, peddler. It was just more antiquated language, and not quite as clear or specific as to what we were really referring to. We've also expanded the permitted locations for the operation of vendors on city property. The pilot allowed just the junction, and now we propose an expansion to also allow food trucks here at 7500 Maple Avenue and also at BYU Morrison Park. And then the third change is to reduce the permitting fee to an annual $50 application fee. Previously, there was a $25 application fee and a $300 annual licensing fee. The county also has their own licensing and permitting fees in addition to all the health code requirements. So we wanted to basically lower the barriers of entry and make it encourage this sort of business in the city. And then just to require that vendors carry proof of liability insurance, at least for those vendors selling on city-owned property. We are also allowing vendors to sell on private property with the requirement that they submit a site plan for staff approval. That would be subject to staff approval. So we would look at things such as the location of the food truck in relation to residences, how the food truck might impact, or the vendor, we're not actually just talking about food trucks, might affect traffic patterns and the like. And then number six, to remove the background check requirement for all vendors, which we talked about at the last meeting in February. And then number seven, to require, or really to prohibit, use of styrofoam containers and polystyrene utensils in the pilot program. That was discouraged. And so we just want to go one step farther and basically reinforce what the city's strategic plan says, which is to have a sustainable and livable community. That's the summary of the changes. And also, we, in your council packets, there's some photographs and Google Math images of all the current locations of the food trucks and the proposed locations, so you can take a look at that. Any questions?
What about, did you consider including explicitly for now other locations than the three you named, recognizing that others can be added by the council or by administration?
Yeah, we said that other locations could be added, but we have not, the only other, there really aren't a lot of locations that are city-owned that would be suitable, that we were able to see as suitable.
What about, I mean, in certain places, street locations could be entirely possible. I'm thinking, for instance, the stretch of Maple Avenue, which is pretty wide. And there's a new farmer's market that could be an attractive place to have food truck vendors. There, that's just one example.
We would certainly take that under consideration. They also might fall into the category of roaming vendors rather than fixed locations, since they-
Roaming, meaning you can stay for 15 minutes in three hours.
Yeah, there's experience.
I mean, an ice cream truck, yes. One of the food trucks that we've been having here, no. Okay.
Okay.
Regarding, I hate to say this, but regarding styrofoam and similar polystyrene food service, where they're, the Old Tacoma Business Association isn't represented here tonight, but I know that there's some reluctance on their part for us to go forward with that, because, well, I guess for many of the food truck vendors, the financial situation is pretty close to the line. They don't make a lot of extra money, and there's concern about extra cost, and that Tacoma Park would be the only place where they'd be required to use other materials, and so on and so forth. I'm not asking for a change. I'm noting that, and we could come back to that one later. I'm kind of really reluctant to weaken that at all, but anyway, there's an economic reality. And let's see, that's the only comments I had.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, with regard to the styrofoam, we don't prescribe regular food sellers, like, I mean restaurants, from using styrofoam and things like that. So you have to sort of say, well, why pick on the vendors, the food vendors? I mean, I think I would be happy if we could abolish that kind of serving material totally 100% from the city. But in the meantime, are we just making the food truck vendors sort of easy targets to ask them to do that? Particularly, the roaming ones, as I'm saying this, I'm just sort of thinking it through, sell some of the time here, but other days of the week and other hours of a particular day, they may be selling in other municipalities. And so that would be kind of a hardship on them to substitute, you know, when they say, oh, I'm going to Tacoma Park on Friday evening, therefore, we've got to get rid of all this and bring in all these other kinds of utensils. For the vendors that are sort of fixed in location and are in the same spot, like the one up at Ethan Allen Avenue in New Hampshire, they're like permanent stores. You could put a, you could put cinder blocks underneath their wagons, because they never move. That might be a little different. They're more like a stationary restaurant. And so I'm just, I think we need to think this through as to the equity of doing that. At first blush, it seems like, yeah, sure, we want to keep people from using polypropylene. The only other comment that I wanted to make, and I think that the idea of a site plan review for the fixed vendors makes sense. I think that's something that you've added in, since I had a chance to talk with you and Sarah Danes last month about it. In the picture you have here, one of the photographs that you have is a picture of a food truck sitting literally right practically as close as you possibly can get to a building. And you have to think that that's not a good situation. It may make the landlord happy, because he's got, he's earning rent from an establishment that he doesn't, doesn't cost him anything. It doesn't have to supply electricity, maybe because the food vendor may have his own generator. All he does is collect rent. But I'm, my concern, as you know, is that if it has a generator, it creates a lot of noise, create odors. That could be rather disturbing to the permanent businesses in there, I mean, in the building. It could be, and I just think that there needs to be, that's one of the considerations that needs to be taken into account when you're looking at these permanent locations on private property, that they could get so close to some of these buildings that it might even become a fire hazard, for example. If one of these food trucks catches fire, it could set fire to the building itself. So I don't know. I don't want to- So I don't know, I don't want to make a big deal out of it, but I think, you know, the point is made. So those are the kinds of things that I think. And the third, third thing I would just say is that in the case of vendors on University Boulevard at Ann Street, which are on private property, and they're, those are the first two, three photographs in this, in this selection of photographs, is that I know that some of the other commercial property owners along that strip between Ann and Merrimack are a little bit less than pleased to have a congregation of food truck vendors parking there every day of the week. Because it tends to cause traffic jams on the auxiliary street if people just jump out of their cars and run over to the food vendor. It's a possibility of trash if the vendor's not doing a good job of maintaining it. It can, during lunch hour, or breakfast, or evenings, whenever these places are open, all of a sudden, there can be a lot of congregation of people attracted there that might discourage customers of other businesses from wanting to even approach those buildings if it gets to be too much. So I'm not trying to paint a portrait of saying, oh, well, this is something we should not allow. Just trying to paint a picture that there should be, that some constraints so that other businesses that are paying real rents aren't, aren't in any way affected, or their customers or would-be customers aren't going to be discouraged from approaching the building or being able to find a parking space if they want to get into one of those businesses. I think those are the people we need to be concerned about.
Councilmember Mayle?
Thank you. First, in regards to the polystyrene ban by vendors or the requirement, well, those requirements, I guess I feel like they're, they serve, they meet a goal that's often been expressed to us by residents in terms of how they want to see businesses operate in the community. The second part in relation to Councilmember Schultz's comment is I think one of the reasons why I think to some extent it's fair to impose that requirement is for the latter part of your discussion. Those food trucks don't pay property taxes, they don't pay inventory tax. We're allowing them to compete against brick-and-mortar businesses that do pay those things. So to some extent, we're tipping the playing field in their advantage. To me, something like a polystyrene, you know, prohibition is just a small tip back in the other direction. So that's, that's one of the reasons to me that it seems like a reasonable thing to ask. And I know, at least in DC, there are many, I don't know that it's a requirement, but there seems to be a growing trend of trucks using cardboard, other materials. Anyway, the other comment, or the set of questions and comments I wanted to ask are in relation to the process of getting vendor permits. So you refer to an annual fee, is that correct? There's a $50 annual fee? Is that also a $50 annual permit application, or is it just that you pay a fee once you have applied and been approved?
It's basically one and the same. So when you apply, that, you pay an application fee.
Okay.
There's not an additional fee.
So, so you get your license, you operate for one year, the next year you submit a new piece of paper with a new fee, you keep going?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess what I was interested in is, and I'm just not completely certain the language does this, but whether one of the bases for either suspension or revocation or for not approving a permit is, is failure to uphold some of the things in this, in this passage. And I think the issue of refuse is probably one of the most acute ones that I see in Ward Two, where residents have had repeated problems with trash building up on sites of permanent food trucks. And so I just wanted to ask you the question of whether it's clear that if there is a problem associated with trash, that those, the sections on refuse here not being addressed, if that is a reason for the city manager to deny a permit or to suspend the permit?
I believe it is. Under 8.12.110, number five, A15, or A5, violating a condition of the vendor permit. And then-
Okay.
Paragraph four as well.
Okay.
Violation of city law.
So then the, the, sorry, one sec. So eight dash 12, or dot 12 dot O90, recycling and trash would be something that would become a condition?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say that I find myself agreeing with Councilmember Mayle on the kind of tipping the balance back over the other way on the polystyrene that, given all the other things that they have an advantage, I think that it's reasonable to kind of tip back the other way and do the polystyrene on them. On that, in that section, I'm assuming that there may have been some other word in there that got taken out but left the stranded ore in front of styrofoam? Was there supposed to be a third type of thing in there?
I think we should just delete the ore.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Sorry.
But I just wondered whether something else had been there, and maybe there was some discussion.
Yeah.
And on the previous page, up in number six, above 8.12.050, there's the insurance policy with at least, and there's no dollar figure in there. Is that something that you are still working on?
We're still working on that. Do you want to speak to that?
I've just been trying to get in touch with somebody that's legit to get some feedback on the proper amount of having to do that yet.
And on page two, in the yard sale section, just above the middle of the page, I'm assuming that we don't, we're not talking about law sales, we're talking about lawn sales?
Yes. I think, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Law sales.
We can, we can, yeah. We could sell the old one, the old section of this. See what somebody wants to pay for it, maybe $50. I think that's all the questions I have on this. I think it looked like a pretty good way to go in terms of reconfiguring how this is set up. I know we've had a fair amount of discussion over the years about vendor permits and transit merchant things and what's going to apply in certain, some, some things seem to fit well in one section of the city and don't fit well in another section. And I agree that there may be some, with this new definition, there may be some other areas that we want to define as places where food trucks could go. I see additional lights from all the people who have spoken, and they weren't there a second ago, so I'll just take them in order. Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. Back to polystyrene and so on. I was checking something, so I might have missed Councilmember Mayle. I heard you say recyclables. There's also the idea of, well, encouraging, regardless of what happens with this polystyrene language, which, again, I'm inclined to retain all the pets and qualms, encouraging compostables and that vendors allow the use of reusable containers that people bring there themselves. That encouragement, you know, it's tricky what you're going to put in code, could include, it seems a reach to do things like include that discounts be required or something like that. It's just ideas at this moment.
Councilmember Schultz?
Another kind of random idea, and that is, is that we're reducing the fee to $50. But I'm wondering if it makes, in regard to picking up the idea of tilting the balance a little bit, for permanent-located vendors, $50 a year for the right to sell at a location seems, if you think about it, awfully small amount to charge. I'm not saying it should be usurious, if that's a word, or, you know, or prohibitively expensive in any way that would discourage somebody from even thinking about going into business, but whereas for $50 for a truck that comes in on occasion might be one thing, so that they have the privilege of parking or roaming at certain locations like the Friday night thing. That's one sort of case, but, and I can see where $50 might be enough, just to simply, so that we can at least register them and know who they are and go through the process. But for the other one where we have to look at site plans, I think you could justify do, pay, charging a higher fee.
Just to note, those folks would be paying rent to the property owners, so they have, they would have that, you know, private arrangement, and then, of course, there's the county fees.
Yeah. Well, so they're, yeah, they're paying for a health inspection with the county as well as the permitting, the Montgomery County permitting.
That's right.
Do you all hand with those fees amount to?
It's a couple hundred for the health inspection. And I don't remember what the-
It's in the range of 500. It's in the range for both, for everything. It's in the range of 500 a year for these vendors.
Because I thought one of the reasons for us lowering it was that we realized that ours was fairly high, given all of the other fees involved and what other jurisdictions were doing as well.
I see. Okay.
Councilmember Mayle?
Thank you. I mean, I think the point Councilmember Schultz just made is, you know, anyway, I was interested in that point, too, and then we went back and forth, so I'm not sure where I am at this point, but there is a difference between the permanent and the non-permanent trucks. The question I was going to have is, under the definition of yard sale, which Mayor Williams brought up, we limit yard sales to no more than four times a year? Is that correct? Do we enforce that, or do we, or is it just helpful to have in the books?
It's state law that the- You're allowed to have four such sales in a year without being required to be collecting taxes and for it to not be a business. So you can't have a yard sale every week and really have a small business in your front yard.
Do we, have we enforced that provision in the past, to your knowledge? We have?
Yeah. I mean, I know of times when-
Okay, thank you.
Didn't know that was state law.
Yeah, you have to cut it out. Too bad for you.
Haven't ever had one. Are there any other questions, comments on these changes? So are, what, do we still need to come back to on this? We had scheduled another session. It sounds like we have a fair amount of consensus on this. Are there things that staff still needs us to give direction on, or do you feel like you have what you need for any, any changes to what we have in front of us so that you could bring it back?
I think, I think, so just to reiterate, to consider other locations in the city. Would you like something more specific than the language that is there now? Under, on page five, it's B4. It says such other locations designated by ordinance or regulation.
I mean, what's the overhead in issuing regulations here? Does it, does it have to be a formal process, or is it just sort of the city manager says, hey, sure, you can do that? So is it-
Regulation, it's formal process.
It's a formal process.
Right. Otherwise, ordinance is so forth.
So if we want to make it clear that it's possible that these permits, fixed-location permits could be issued for spots on the right-of-way, we can just, we can add that clarification.
That sounds like a good idea, I agree.
Sounds like you have concurrence on that.
Okay. And then I think on everything else.
I guess the, the, did you all want more information or ideas about the styrofoam composting, bringing your own containers, those possibilities?
I was just going to say, with regard to the bring-your-own-containers, it might be helpful to find out if county health code-
Would allow such an activity?
We actually had, due to, given the work of a former Tacoma Park resident who left here, I think probably 10 years ago, some of the festivals had bring-your-own-container discounts, but that doesn't mean it was necessarily legal. But, so, yeah, it would be good to, it would be good to check in on that.
I mean, you can bring your own cup to 7-Eleven, so I don't know if that extends beyond beverages or not.
It, but it's simply by, actually, it probably would be helpful even just to resolve it, because then, for example-
But, no, we won't.
We could make it clear to vendors that if someone asks, you know, that that's our interpretation of county policy, that's what the county told us. Making that information publicly available might help.
And I don't know if you have anything further-
Councilmember Grimes on composting, if you wanted to ask about composting?
Right, yeah. I think that part of the job is ours there, councilmembers, to talk to some of the organizations. Well, you can certainly do that, too, Ms. Cohen, but to talk to OTBA and, you know, find out what their view is on the topic. That's not just solely your responsibility, I think it's mine, for instance, as well.
Mike, I'd like to go back to the question about locating on city streets. One of the things that I kind of wonder about is if somebody would object to having it on their block, and if there's a process by which, you know, here, we've identified three spaces, three places where people, you know, that, there was action taken on this. You know, I just wonder if there is something that, that you want to have, something so it's formal, so that if somebody had an objection to a particular location for a reason, that that would be addressed to you, or if you would just, or if it's fine for you to, you know, leave it as just as designated.
I was envisioning that the same process for establishing new spots on city property for establishing acceptable spots on the right-of-way.
That it would be by ordinance or regulation?
I missed the connection there, then.
Okay, so are people happy with that process?
Are we speaking about, are we speaking here about paragraph B that says such other locations designated by ordinance?
Yes.
Or regulation, we're saying?
Yes, that, that-
That that's what we want to say.
We would make it clear that it, up at the top, at the beginning of paragraph B, fixed-location vendor permits required for vendors operating on city property, we say, and on permanent locations in the city right-of-way. Something to that effect.
On the city right-of-way.
To make clear that it's, could, could be on the right-of-way, not just on city property.
And the word permanent meaning what?
But, well, fixed-location, meaning they don't have to move every 15 minutes.
Right. Permanent exists in the island, you hold.
I'm sorry, are you saying permanent or permanent?
Oh, permitted, I'm sorry.
That's why I was confused.
So we're in agreement on that?
Yep.
You've got all the information you need to come back with any potential changes, but we should be able to do that without another work session? We should be able to do that with introduction?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then we are at our last item for the evening, which is the work session discussion of the Safe Grow Zone. What I'd like to do is just start it off with a few general comments, and after those, then I'll turn to the city attorney for a summary of his legal memo of today, and then we'll have some discussion. Let me just say that I think there's general agreement that many pesticides cause harm if overused or used improperly. Many people believe that any possible increased risk is too much risk. Others see a range of possible actions and costs. We've heard from a lot of people with a lot of different opinions on this. Many people in the city support taking action to reduce the use of pesticides to improve public health. Many people disagree about how to best go about that. Possible actions are to provide education about pesticide use, or to restrict sale or use by certain parties, or by all parties. It helps- It helps to understand the regulatory infrastructure already in place at the federal and state levels. Do we restrict certain practices by the city or go beyond that? If we go beyond that, how do we do that and at what cost? Some residents have spent a great deal of time researching these topics and they've provided us with a wealth of information. They spent a good deal of time last fall presenting us with information. We provided them with the opportunity to present their ideas to the public at the beginning of the council meeting on March 18th. Councilmembers Mayall and Grimes have worked with them to draft several versions of potential ordinances for us to consider, and we have the latest such draft before us this evening. I think there's been some confusion about what the intent of this draft ordinance is, whether it restricts pesticide use only on lawns or in many other areas. We should decide not only what we might want to restrict on city property, but what we might want to restrict on private property. And we should decide what importance we place on education about these issues as part of any change in policy. And finally, we should be clear about any potential costs of a change brought about by adoption of an ordinance because there's a wide range of potential costs depending on our chosen course of action. Tonight is the first real opportunity that we, the council, have had to consider any possible course of action. I can foresee the need to schedule an additional work session or work sessions on this topic. Many people have weighed in, whether on neighborhood lists or collectively to the council or one-on-one with any of us. I hope our discussion tonight begins to focus us on a path forward that will address many of the concerns raised so far. And if I can then turn to the city attorney and you can summarize the legal memo that you provided this afternoon, and if anybody didn't get a copy of that, it should be in the rack over on the wall.
Sure. The memo, it is just an analysis of the city's authority to enact the Safe Grow Act and to enforce it. This ordinance is intended to protect human health as well as the environment. Both of those purposes are legitimate purposes for the city to pursue. It's, the state of Maryland delegates to municipalities what's called police powers so they can enact ordinances protecting health, safety, and welfare. The Maryland Court of Appeals has determined that protecting the environment is a, an exercise of police powers. Because it's within our authority to protect the environment and protect health, the, you know, the standard of review to see if our law, such a law is proper is whether it's rationally related to this legitimate purpose. And that's not a high bar and there's enough evidence of the impact of pesticides on the environment and on health to, it makes it fairly certain that it is a proper exercise of our authority. Now, there are extensive federal regulations on pesticides. However, the Supreme Court has determined that federal law does not preempt local governments from enacting their own pesticide ordinances. It would be improper if we tried to allow something that the federal government prohibits, but we can pass more restrictive laws. Maryland also has some pesticide regulations. They regulate the labeling of pesticides. They regulate the certification and licensing of professionals who apply pesticides. But there's, there's no indication in state law that, that the state intended to preclude local governments from regulating pesticides. And just by way of example, Montgomery County has some pesticide laws on the books and there's been no legal challenge to, to the county's exercise of that authority. I think we'd fall in the same category with this proposal. And as far as enforcement goes, because it is a proper law, we can enforce it. I think there will be some practical considerations to enforcement. I, you know, I don't think we have anyone on staff who probably is, has the chemical expertise to test lawns. I think we'd have to rely on people to report violations and essentially catch them in the act. I don't think enforcement is really the, I don't think the goal is to catch people in the act. The goal is to discourage violations. And I think the outreach and education portion of the legislation would, would hopefully lead to more, to compliance.
Okay, thanks. And I just want to turn quickly to the acting city manager. If you can just give us your brief thoughts on the potential financial costs to the city. I know that questions have come up, as we've heard from people over the various times that we've heard from people, wanting to know the legal implications of our acting in this area and also wondering about financial costs. And if you can just give us a couple sentences on, on your approach to potential financial impact.
Okay. Let me ask Daryl to help me out a little bit on this, but from our discussions, the preclusion of using certain pesticides on lawns are relatively easier to enforce. It's easier for us to contact the various lawn companies that do this and say, you can't do it in Tacoma Park. So you kind of, you don't have to kind of go property by property, talking to people or enforcing it. You're able to use the major companies as a, as a quick way to reach a bulk of the folks that do use the pesticides. And that would not take the kind of staff for, that, something that would be, if, if we went to something where we really were enforcing restrictions and, and having waivers, et cetera, related to all kinds of vegetation, I think that we end up basically needing a staff person to, to coordinate that and to do the enforcement. There is going to be a burden on staff in either way with some education, and I think education's going to be the most important component of both. But what I would see is if the emphasis was on something broader than just lawns, we'd probably want to have a vegetation specialist that would work with the city that would handle the work related to this ordinance as well as handle some things dealing with bamboo and vines and other kinds of vegetation problems that are a little bit hard for us to deal with right now. So that's what I would see would be the logical difference. So if we're, if the idea of council is to focus and kind of limit this to lawn cosmetic pesticides and not kind of think that it could be much broader with the way the ordinance is written, I think that the amount of cost impact on the city is not great.
Okay. So I think that provides us with kind of a broad overview of the potential legal implications and the potential financial implications depending on where we want to go. So given that introduction, I'd like to turn to councilmember Mayall, if you'd like to provide some remarks.
Sure, thank you. Sounds like the mic is on. I really appreciated the work that members of the community have done on this draft, the city staff, city attorneys review, councilmember Grimes, and other councilmembers' comments. I wanted to focus on, because we've gone through one public forum on this issue before, go through some of the, broadly, not, not by detail, but detail, but the, some of the, some of the major ways this draft has changed based on the previous draft, which was based on the feedback we received at that forum and also through written comments. First, as the acting city manager just indicated, there were questions about the scope of this. What does it apply to? And the scope is now narrowed, or at least it's intended to be narrowed, to focus on lawns. There may still be some issues around what is the definition of a lawn to deal with, but I think that's a, that's a response to the community, you know, expressing, you know, where are the greatest concerns about pesticide use? Where is a surface in which its enforcement and implementation may be easiest? So that's one piece of what's changed. We heard tonight, we heard previously, we've heard through written comments about the important role of education, how many people essentially would want to do the right thing if they, if they had some guidance on what that would be. And so the revised ordinance talks quite a bit about education and right in the front. There are even provisions where some of the deadlines or periods of phasing this in would, are designed to help create more opportunities for education. I expect there are ways maybe that we could strengthen that or, or at least get maybe more guidance from people about what that education could entail, what's the, what's the most effective way to provide it. We heard from people about the penalties, you know, of having this be a punitive approach and a number of changes have been made. One of them is to defer the start of penalties until 2015, until summer of 2015, which would give the city some experiments, experience in implementing this, potentially give the next council room to make adjustments, changes, improvements based on what we learned in that, in whatever the sort of first phase was. There have been comments about, you know, what's the, what's the reason for doing this? What's, what's the basis for this action? And in that respect, in the whereas and opening sections of this, there is a discussion of rationales of why we would want to take this step. And we heard many of those same comments echoed in, in public comments tonight. And there are obviously still additional changes that could be made in this document to tighten it up, to, there are some typos in here for which I'll take responsibility for some of them. And there are still, you know, valid, good ideas coming in on how to, how to do, do this effectively. What I heard tonight, what I heard in, in comments on listservs, what I heard at the last public forum was, as the mayor indicated, more or less unanimity that most people share the goal of seeing fewer pesticides used in the community. And so the question is, how do we do it effectively? I want to address one other comment before I close, which came up in, in listserv comments and, well, it's two sides. It's one that we're not signed to, well, I am, but I'm not a, with no relevant expertise to this issue. You know, we're not scientists. Our city manager shouldn't have to be a scientist. We're not going to be the experts to, to figure out what is or isn't a safe enough Residents raised issues about that and I completely agree that we should do our best to take advantage of existing science and existing regulatory agency's evaluation process to look at risks associated with chemicals. So that's the first part. The part I'd push back on a little bit is decisions about approval of things like pesticides are not entirely science-based. At the end of the day, it's a value-based decision about how much risk you want to take in association with whatever benefit the compound provides. And just to give some examples, just from federal law in the United States, and we know that Europe and Canada take different approaches still, under the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act, the standard for a pesticide is a reasonable certainty of no harm. So reasonable certainty and no harm are the operating words. Under the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide, and Rodenticide Act, which is in general the dominant one that is, that is allowing the use of most chemicals on lawns in the city, the agency must determine that a chemical won't, won't cause unreasonable. So we had, we went from reasonable to won't cause unreasonable, and now it's not no harm, it's adverse effects, after taking into effect economic benefits associated with its use. So now we have a cost-benefit trade-off. Under another standard, the Endangered Species Act, a pesticide may affect, but can't be likely to adversely affect endangered species. Those are just three examples from three U.S. laws where Congress and the American people have chosen to take a different standard when it comes to risk. In our document, we talk about the precautionary principle, which, which may be more closely aligned with the Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act, reasonable certainty of no harm. It's probably closer to that standard. But I think it's a, it's a reasonable thing for any political body, such as ours, with a power to, to, to deal with an issue like this, to think about and to work with the community on what's the level of risk that we want to tolerate to our residents, to children, to pets, to the community, to our waters and Chesapeake Bay, and try to find some way to, that allows us to interpret that risk standard and to think about the science in a way that doesn't require us to become experts in these fields, but does allow us to make a value-based decision about how much risk we want to take. And I think we heard from many residents tonight and others at other parts of the process about where they feel comfortable or uncomfortable with risks associated with chemicals. I'll stop there.
If councilmember Grimes has a chance to make any comments he wants to make, and then I'd like to follow that with a question or two. I think I see correctly that the public works director is out there, and I wanted to, I had a question for her.
Thank you. Well, it's been a, actually, a long process to date. I think that I first discussed this topic with Catherine Cummings and Julie Tadeo, in the winter of 2012, so over a year ago, and we've had many, many comments in in-person conversations and council testimony and email messages and so on. And one thing that has struck me especially lately, the last few months, is the very wide range of opinions in Tacoma Park, and they're not uniformly distributed. Seems that the negative opinions are concentrated not only, well, not in my ward, but in my neighborhood, which I'm very sensitive to. On the other hand, in the testimony we had here tonight, my count was 19 people speaking out specifically in favor of this legislation and only two people speaking out against. One of those two spoke out against, not because she didn't like the idea of regulating pesticides, but because specifically of the fines attached to it. And I do recognize that several of my constituents, people from my neighborhood, have arrived since that time. I count four in the room right now. There were two others here, and then there was one other here earlier, who are opponents of this thing. There's been question about levels of support. My own tally of Ward 1, my ward, is, as best I could count it, probably half an hour ago, was 37 people in Ward 1 in favor of Safe Grow and 29 opposed. Those 29 were almost all in the Philadelphia Eastern neighborhood. So I've, I've been trying to puzzle out why we have this kind of split in Tacoma Park. So as councilmember Mayall was saying, there have been some very valid criticisms of Safe Grow, and criticisms expressed previously have helped us to improve the draft that is before the council right now. We're not voting on it. We're discussing it. We're discussing next steps. Criticisms that have come forward in the last few days will help us to improve the draft yet further if we do move ahead. It is still a draft. So that's the observations that I want to make by way of context. I do think that, given the very broad support accepting one neighborhood, the proponents have done hard work over the last several weeks, probably three weeks, collecting signatures. Your count on the front here, you wrote in 269. That's pretty impressive, as you noted earlier. That includes certain public figures such as Heather Mazzier, Mark Elrich, and former Ward 1 councilmember Josh Wright. The justification here in terms of support within Tacoma Park exists, so I will support moving forward with further discussion. I will say that we have not tapped the Environment Committee, which was formed specifically to look at issues like this. The Environment Committee was reformulated only after this process got started. Could be a good idea to refer this to them for discussion, and I'll stop there for now.
Since this draft legislation differentiates what the city would do from what might happen on private property, I just wanted to give the public works director a chance to remind us what the city currently does and any observations you want to make on how this would affect your department's operations.
Sure. The city, as I think as I mentioned earlier, doesn't have any licensed pesticide applicators on staff, so we don't do any pesticide application with, with city staff. That being said, there's very limited use of pesticides on any city right of way or public space, and, and my knowledge, it's limited to invasive management, and we do that through contract. contract, and that's specifically been on open space areas where we're trying to manage either bamboo, multiflora rose, kudzu, those types of invasive plants that are overtaking the trees, and it's largely been for species protection and native plant protection that we've taken those, those actions. So that's done by contract, and it's done on specific parcels of city space that are being negatively impacted by invasive plants, and that's been our pesticide application. In general, we do do weed control or grass control in some places, those most often are along the, you know, July 4th parade route, and we use a solution of vinegar and/or heat guns to kill weeds. So there is a weed management program within some of the public right-of-way spaces, and it's done through non-chemical means at this point. In terms of the city buildings, we do have contracted pest management companies that come in monthly into these facilities and in some other buildings quarterly, and they're required by state law to have the presence of insects prior to any treatment. City employees do have the option of asking that their areas not be treated in the event that they are sensitive to chemicals or prefer not to work in a space that had been treated. So we take those kind of things into, into consideration in terms of, you know, building management. I don't know if that gets at all your questions.
And I'm just wondering about, as, as this draft is currently written, what you would have to change, if anything, in terms of your current practices?
I don't think we'd have to change anything in terms of our current practice. I believe, if my understanding is correct, that the places where we now do pesticide application would still be allowed in the definitions of, of the purpose of what they're being used for, they're not on a lawn treatment, or for aesthetic reasons, they're for management of harmful, harmful plants. So if I am understanding right, there wouldn't be an impact in our, in our current operations. In terms of the enforcement activity that this law would require, again, I'm still not 100% clear about what offices would work out of or how it would be. It seems like it's largely initially an educational type approach, where we would be proactively notifying either those companies that are in the business of doing this, what the city law is, or tangentially, those large institutions or public, you know, buildings and private apartment complexes and things like that, where they're likely to be the largest potential users of these types of services, and notifying them that there is, if it, if it were to come to pass, a prohibition on those. So I think you would target those potential large users, as well as the companies that offer the services and, you know, in an educational kind of way, let them know that the law's been changed in the city. And then we'd use the normal other methods of education and notification through the city's website, the city's newsletter, these public meetings, and those types of ways to start off the process with, from a, kind of an educational notification point of view.
Okay. And if I can turn to the city attorney for another clarification in terms of, that reminded me, as the Public Works Director was talking about, some of the larger private institutions, thinking about what obligations or actions that we could request of other levels of government who have property in the city, thinking particularly of the county school system and their lawns, what, if anything, can we do to affect how they operate within the city?
It would, we'd have to focus on voluntary compliance and just bring them up to speed with what our policies and practices are and why we have them.
So that, for park and planning parks or school facilities, we can, we can request things, but we can't force compliance of, of those levels of government?
Right.
Okay. So I think that provides some clarity about different aspects of this. I would turn to my colleagues for questions or comments, and Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, yeah, I have a question for the Public Works Director, and that would re, would be with regard to the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, their Parks Division, which they, we have a lot of their parks, and they're in here in this city. Do we know what sort of methodologies or processes they, they, they have with regard to the use of herbicides and pesticides?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. We could certainly make inquiries to the park managers that oversee our areas and find out.
I mean, I think that that would be something that makes a lot of sense to do. I mean, obviously, if they are using this stuff, we can't, you know, as already been pointed out, they're different, different governments, we can't make them to do things. Yes, you want to step up to the podium, please?
Yeah, I'm very sorry to interrupt. I did call Montgomery County Parks. Right now, the budget doesn't allow for much use of pesticides in the parks, and they prefer not to, is what I got from my phone conversation with one very helpful person. When they do, it's typically for like poison ivy or invasive plant species, it might be up to once a year, and they do post notice, they post the required prohibitory sign afterward. So I, does that help?
Yeah.
And in the schools, I can also answer a little bit.
Please.
Montgomery County Public Schools, they're on, they actually have a very nice policy. It's an IPM policy already, it's a good one in the nation.
IPM is integrated pest management?
I'm sorry?
IPM is integrated pest management?
Yeah. And of course, that's a sort of a subjective, IPM is somewhat subjective, so people criticize it, but I've worked with them and talked to them about some, some things, and they were very responsive, and they, they're kind of working toward their goals in a really nice way, and if there are glitches, but I, I don't think we can reach into that that much unless, like what you're saying, it's a voluntary thing. And then there are some other laws and other, like the Child Safe Playing Act, they could adopt that, that could be another initiative, they could adopt that, similar to New York, Connecticut, New Jersey, but it is separate.
Thanks, I appreciate your, raising your hand so I could, I just.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't contain myself. I could talk to them.
Well, no, I mean, I'm looking, we're looking for information, and wherever we find it is gratifying. I just want to say that, you know, the, the essence of everything that we're talking about here boils down to education, not enforcement. I mean, we, and I, we can delay the enforcement process perhaps to give, give everybody, particularly homeowners and, you know, time to adjust, but also commercial, you know, the, the large property owners and, and the commercial companies that do lawns and all that sort of thing deserve adequate notice. But, and I, and I understand that the, that we've reduced the scope of this to focus on lawns, but the, but the fact is, is that education will help people and needs to help people to understand when they go into the store, whether it's Ace Hardware or Home Depot, or one of the other places to pick, you know, pick out stuff, is that they know what they're looking for, because the labels, you know, everything has safe on it nowadays. I mean, it's just, it's a meaningless term. It's like the word organic, you know, or natural or something like that. And so we, we need to learn. I think a lot of people, just like recycling, we, we can't force people to, to do recycling. We don't penalize people if they, if they don't recycle, but what you, what we're doing is we're appealing to people's better nature, and I just think that there's a very natural impulse among residents in any community like ours to want to try and figure out what is the right thing to do, because I think it's like recycling, it's the sort of thing that we can all kind of relate to. It's not, not that abstract, it's not like, oh, well, you know, nuclear war, I can't figure that one out, I'm not going to join the nuclear, anti-nuclear committee, but this is something that people can relate to. And I think education will be a very productive process, but to help people understand that, you know, whether it's, it's plants, you know, they want to get rid of mites, or different kinds of fungus diseases on their roses and other kinds of things, is that there are, there are some very practical things that can be done without even having to go to the store. But if you do need to go to the store to buy something, then what do you look for? What are the brand names and all of that? I think a lot of people will, will respond to that. And so I think we'll make a lot of progress over a few years in just helping people learn so that, once they know, they know. And the information will, will spread around, and, you know, we, we can bring in experts and all that other stuff, who want, people want to learn more about it. So I don't think that this thing should cost the city a lot of money. I'm, I'm thinking that this ought to be something that we, that ought to be, takes, takes time. I mean, one, one of the speakers here before made the comment, oh, laws don't, you know, change anybody's attitude. Well, I think that they do, and there's a lot of laws we have on the books that are not literally enforceable. But I, I think a lot of people say, well, there's a law, and that's why you can't do it. It's sort of like parents saying to their children, well, because I said so, you know, I mean, what, you know, and that's, that's sufficient. And it's, and people say, oh, well, there's a law that says you can't do X, and because that, we're, we're not going to do that anymore, we're, we're changing. And so, my Lord, the whole, the whole civil rights movement got started because of civil rights laws, and now all of a sudden, most of the people in the United States understand that there's certain things that you can't do these days that you used to be able to do 100 years ago. So I think we're going in the right direction. I applaud the work that all of you are doing, and I'm very happy to support it. I know there's still a lot of tinkering around the edges that may need to be done, and I want to thank Councilmember Mayle and Councilmember Grimes for the work that they've, they've already done on this.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I've looked at the various responses from across the city and the emails and letters that we've received, you know, there's a lot of people who are very supportive, like we heard from many of them tonight at the hearing earlier, at the public comment session, and we've also received a lot of feedback from people, only a couple here tonight, but, but in other correspondence, it was strongly opposed to saying that, you know, it's not something that we as a local government should be doing. Of course, that's a term we, or an expression that we hear frequently in Tacoma Park. But I think it's been valuable for me to just think about, you know, why, why are you, are you here tonight? Why is this before us tonight? And I think the, the lady that came up and spoke about fossil fuels and asking for, you know, some stand from the city on fossil fuels, kind of puts it in perspective for me. And I think what's happening is that we, as community members, look and see problems occurring in our, in our community, problems with health, problems with our children especially, and the health of the children. We see a rise in asthma, we see a rise in autism, we see a lot of things, and, and we wonder, as we read some of the news articles, if, you know, this isn't related to the chemicals that we're getting, ingesting in, in various ways, and pesticides, herbicides, one of the ways that we do that. And then people say, well, you know, that isn't something that a local government should be, you know, has the expertise or the ability to, to deal with. But I think that as, as people, we see these problems, and those people who are probably in the better position to take care of it aren't doing it, and that's our federal government. This is compounded by kind of a waning confidence in our federal government that I think we're seeing in not just this particular issue, but in other ways. And we hear about big business influencing decisions in the federal government. So I, I guess where I am at this point is, I think the federal government should be doing it, but I think the federal government isn't doing an adequate job, and so I think as a local government, we have to protect ourselves and our, and our community. I really appreciate the work you've put into this. I don't know that we're, where we need to be when we, you know, when we finally vote on this and, and pass it, but I appreciate Councilmember Grimes, Grimes' suggestion that we have the, the Environmental Committee on the Environment weigh in on this subject. And I think, I appreciate Councilmember Schultz and Mayor Williams' suggestion that, you know, we further explore the educational component of it, so that we can move this into where it's going to be something that's workable. I, I've talked with both of you that I think that, you know, when we're talking about outright ban, I think it's, it's easier for us as a community to say, well, we ban commercial applications, or we ban applications on commercial property, because that's something that's a little easier for us to enforce. But I also appreciate that, you know, ban here and ban there may not be the right way at all, it may be that the educational component can be much stronger and, and be more effective further across the board, if we can enhance that some way in the, in the proposal. Thank you.
Councilmember Mayle.
Thank you. I too appreciate Councilmember Grimes' suggestion about referring this to the Committee on the Environment, and I think in my mind, there are a couple of questions that, that I might tee up for them, which might be something along the lines of, is taking a list-based approach, having a, a list of, I think, 10 or maybe it's 11, compounds prohibited, is, I think we made that effort to do that because that makes it far clearer. You can, you can read this, you know what the ingredients are, that chemical or pesticide ingredients are that are on the city's list, but is that the right way to go, or is there a different way? I'll just note that one of the compounds on this list is, is categorized by EPA as a potential human carcinogen, another one is categorized as a likely human carcinogen. So a different approach would be to just say, all the list of, of compounds that are likely human carcinogens or potential hu, you know, you could, you could pick up a different way to do it. So that might be one question that the Committee on the Environment would be well-placed to give us some advice on. Another question might be, are there lessons from the city's tree, and this is actually a question that I would be interested in the, the Public Works Director's opinion on as well, are there lessons learned from the city tree ordinance that we should take to heart when, when building and then implementing this initiative? And that might be something that community members have a good sense for as well. And then the third question might, that they might be able to help us on, or the third question that comes to mind immediately for me, would be a question around, you know, how best to do education, what are the most helpful ways to, to roll that out early in the process? And with regard to education, you know, I would hope that, for example, of things like development of a Tacoma Park-specific flyer or printed materials in some form, you know, if we come to the point where those things would be helpful, and spending a small amount of money to, to do something like that would be a, probably a, a good investment. And I will stop talking there. Thank you.
And I've thought of a thing or two that we might ask the Committee on the Environment, we might ask the attorney, we might ask the Public Works Director, where we might have to determine ourselves, and if we're going to go forward with this and it's going to restrict use on lawns, we're probably going to need to come up with a definition of a lawn, because you, you can say that you could.
Maybe an improved, we have one, maybe an improved one.
An improved one, because if, if we're going to, I'm, I'm just thinking of things like, you know, is it, how, how big a piece of, of tended grass is it? Is it, you know, is there a certain minimum size that constitutes a lawn? Or, you know, if it's, if it's only the strip between the two paved things in your driveway, is, you know, is that a lawn? Or I can just see the potential for questions about, you know, well, you know, whatever it is that somebody is doing something on, and they say, well, you know, that's not lawn.
Maybe just say, maybe just say you can specify the size, but typically the
We can specify the size, but typically, the key, the defining point is whether you have to mow it to keep it at a proper length.
Okay. Is it the three-eighths inch wide strip between two patio pavers on my patio?
What about if we just say-
If you have to mow it, under this definition, yes.
What about if we just say, "Within the city?" Don't use pesticides within the city. I mean, is it a-
Then it gets a lot broader.
Yeah.
So, just, I think that's, that's something that we need to put a little bit more thought into. And I have a question on the, on the draft proposal that somebody might be able to easily answer, and if not, you know, come back with it. But in the 14.28.050 prohibited applications, and then, A, used by city agents and employees, it starts out by saying, "Except is provided in paragraphs 1 to 3 of this subsection, but there's only two paragraphs."
That's truly a legacy of earlier-
And so, I'm just wondering whether it should just change 1 to 2, paragraph 1 to 2 of this subsection, or whether there was something that got left out.
I'll have to, to double-check. And that's my, my mistake there.
As Councilmember Mail noted, there are a number of misspellings, including one of the chemical compounds, so on.
Yeah. And so, I have a number of kind of editorial questions that I can feed to whoever is going to deal with them. And when we determine who that is, I'll feed them to them. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I have a number of disjointed comments, all on the one topic, of course. One is that I omitted something when I suggested that we ask the Committee on the Environment to take this up, which is that I would also invite people who are opponents, many of whom are extremely well-qualified, to comment on this and have very well-reasoned opposition to this, to take part in that. If we can operate on the basis of a recognition that everyone involved here has the goodwill of the city and of individuals in the city at heart, I would hope that we could have that kind of cooperation in order to craft something better for the city as we move ahead toward a final vote, noting that the final vote could go in either direction. Number two, it's a little unfair to represent someone who isn't here, but I can assure you that Councilmember Daniels' call is strongly in favor of moving ahead with this. I note that, with a bit of irony, we were talking in the previous work session item about transient merchants and peddlers, we talked about polystyrene. We have a proposal similarly generated by members of the community to pursue a citywide polystyrene ban that would apply to commercial food establishments, that would be restaurants, carryout, cafeteria, and so on. Polystyrene has the status, I researched this, it's not hard to research it, given that the community members make it easy, of being, polystyrene is made from styrene, which the National Institutes of Health calls reasonably anticipated to be a human carcinogen, similar to the status of the pesticides we're discussing here. So, I will say that in moving forward with Safe Tacoma, we're, why did I say that? Moving forward with Safe Grow, we are establishing a precedent for, that can be applied in moving forward with other initiatives that have come before us from the community. A further random point is that I recognize that there are several members of the community who consider this to be invasive of their private property. This has come up earlier this evening, including one person in this room. I will just say that it seems to be a prevailing Tacoma Park attitude to tolerate this kind of invasiveness while recognizing it. We have Historic District that says that private properties within the Historic District are essentially community goods. Similarly, our tree ordinance, we don't let people pile junk in their yards. We have zoning laws that say what you can do where. We get in each other's business, one another's business all the time. That's an observation. And lastly, while we are talking about referring this to the Environment Committee for the revisions, I just advocated talking to opponents to see if we can have them contribute to something that works best for Tacoma Park. I would like to see this move forward to a vote without undue delay.
And just along those lines, my thought is that the Committee on the Environment meets monthly?
Yeah, but I would say the Committee on the Environment meets monthly, and they have a, they're going to create a subcommittee that meets a second meeting in the month. But they've also established a subcommittee to work on this issue. So, there's two Committee on the Environment members that have been, agreed to follow-up with Safe Grow folks and have a discussion. I think they'll invite you to the next door, you know, whenever you can, a committee meeting to kind of lay out the information. I think one of the other aspects will, will be if there is a more broad discussion about that, how the committee might want to get that information, or take that information, or have that participation. Because at this point, they're looking at it as their own kind of background information and research as a committee versus, you know, interactive process with the community at large.
So, maybe-
Community-
Go ahead.
Community interactions, the interactions are a primary responsibility of council members, and I certainly will not shy away from that. The Committee on the Environment is mostly self-governing within the city committees, within guidelines given by the council. So, I would not try to shift any kind of burden onto them that I should possess, that I should own to an extent myself.
And I think the next committee meeting is June 10th, and it always takes place in this, this building, and they meet it from 7:00 to 8:30.
I just want to say about that, we did invite them tonight, and for the reason of dance, D S L made an already bit of touch. He has signed our agreement, by the way. And we sent him everything, everything that you guys have brought. And we asked someone to sit in on the public comments, the work session, and they had said no.
I think it's more of an organizational issue, perhaps?
It is. It's not a unwillingness. They're starting to delay things by a lot. They're not that well-organized. They're just getting off the ground, which is okay.
So, I think we could say that we would, we would like some input from them, but we don't want it to be a delay that is going to hold things up too much. So, if they can get back to us with their reactions to things as quickly as possible, that would be helpful.
Well, I think as they're set up, that they feel strongly that there needs to be an interactive discussion with the folks that are proponents of this, you know, have worked on this up to this point and to the degree that they can-
It's not on their minutes, but they were reached out to us-
But they reached out to us months ago when they got here.
And it was just one of those things where the woman who was designated, the person who was designated, you know, said, "Oops, slipped my line."
Right.
Fine, you know, but-
Okay.
Right. But it was two months ago.
Right. So, I think their earliest, this could come before the committee meeting in June, whether or not they feel comfortable at that point in time, hearing whatever they hear at that point, to make any recommendations. They are a very process-oriented group, they are new, so they're really kind of feeling their way. They take this stuff very seriously, as I can attest from sitting in their meeting tonight. They'd be happy to, to get engaged in this issue, but they do want to, you know, kind of create a process where they're not, where they're fully aware and plugged into the issue.
Okay. So, I think we can ask that they weigh in and engage, but without causing big delay.
Well, yeah, because it's just that we've been working on this now for-
I know.
Two years, two years. And, you know, we feel we've provided, put out there, you know, sort of this body of, you know, literature or whatever, that they can access, but also, it just doesn't, it doesn't quite seem fair to sort of toss the ball in their court or something. I don't know. I would love their input. I just, it just hasn't happened, but.
But they would- And maybe what we can do, because I don't want to kind of let this drop, is we'll, we'll schedule an update on this for, the Committee on the Environment meets June 10th. Maybe we could, I'll look at the schedule tomorrow, but maybe something like June 17th, just to make sure that this doesn't kind of go away.
Going out of the country, I mean, I would love to be working on that, and do it afterwards. Or can you have it Monday?
We'll, we'll figure something out that works to revisit, because we have, I think, a number of things that we want to get cleaned up in this version, a number of clarifications. We'll get some input from the Committee on the Environment, but we'll, we'll keep this Are there other observations or questions? Councilmember Siemens.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I spoke with a young lady this evening that brought up a perspective that I'm not sure we've considered fully. And, you know, often, when we look at these things of, things we don't want, we, we think about, well, how can we ban that so it doesn't happen, rather than how do we hang a carrot out there to get people to do what we do want them to do and take the actions we do want to see. The suggestion was that possibly having a, a list of products that are acceptable as a replacement, and then recommending specific landscapers and organizations who use acceptable organic methods of landscaping, and kind of encouraging the community to use those strictly through a list of approved, if you will, landscapers. That might be another approach to beyond just the education.
Or potentially, good, good processes or good practices, so that anybody that they talk to, they can say, "Do you do this type of thing?"
Right.
Rather than getting into the business of recommending particular businesses.
Right. And again, it might be an organization, not the government itself, that recommends specific landscapers.
Councilmember Mail, did you have other?
I did. I wanted to respond to something Councilmember Grimes said. He referred to comments about privacy issues. And I think, and I, and this came up in testimony earlier tonight, but the flip side of privacy is people who have chemical drift going on to their own properties. And I was thinking about the, to me, the, this is off the top of my head, but sort of three principles of the things that we would maybe be most concerned about are those chemicals that have a long persistence, so they're more likely to move from one property to another, including public property. Associated with that might be how they're applied, so things that are applied through spray might be more likely to contaminate someone else's property than granular application, I don't know. And then, the third thing is obviously health risk. And I think I really want to make sure that we, and this is where so many of the people who've commented, both in support and opposition, could be helpful. What are the best ways to, for us to identify the, the compounds that really do create the highest risk to the health of our community? And I don't have a good answer yet for what that is. We have a list, we could start with that, and that could just be it. But there may be other ways that we can look at, that we can more simply come up with criteria that would allow us to, to come up with a list that is accurate, that really reflects the best available science, without us having to do the work. That might be looking at lists of things that are banned in the EU, banned in Canada, as I said earlier, things that are known carcinogens. I don't, this, the issue that was brought up earlier about endocrine disruptors, I just don't know enough about the status of the science and the, and the regulatory process on, on endocrine disruptors to know, you know, how we would deal with that. So, it may be that there's no answer to what I just raised, and we might just have to stick with the list. But, but I want to make sure that the things that, if we do move forward with this, or when we do move forward with this, the things that we regulate are really things that everyone could agree that there's significant science that shows this is something to be worried about. So, thank you.
I think it might be helpful for all of us to, to think about the fact that, once we pass this ordinance, that we're not completing anything, that this is a start, and that through experience and learning, we're going to be coming back to improve it, you know, to make changes in it, to enhance it, to give it, make it clearer, and as we learn more, to make it more definitive. Because I think we could mess around with this thing for months and months and months, and sort of keep trying to get it better and better, which would sort of suggest that Ms. Tadio and Ms. Cunningham may end up being their, an ad hoc committee of two who are going to be helped, yeah, help us learn and pay attention to stuff so that, once we've adopted this ordinance, we can progress with it in terms of figuring out what's working and what's not working, and that sort of thing. I think that will help us, because I just don't see how we're, we're going to be able to, there's just so many unknowns, but yet underneath, I think all of us understand that we've got to do something. We can't not attend to this, and, and so that we can maybe get this thing adopted in a reasonable period of time without too much more delay.
And I think along those same lines, we've got long experience with the tree ordinance, that we've revisited the tree ordinance, I don't know how many times, I'll say four or five at least, and made revisions to it over the long time that we've had that. And people come to us with additional comments all the time, so-
Kind of like that could-
That too. And so, we don't need to let perfect be the enemy of the good, and we can, we can move forward with something in a fairly expeditious manner. I don't see any more lights, anything else that we need to know tonight. We will continue our discussion of this. We will get information from the Committee on the Environment, and who are we giving revisions to?
There's just one question. The, the idea of limiting it to lawn care only, is there consensus on, on that point? Because that-
Are you referring to- Removing the areas of use from the registry and putting it directly in the ordinance? Or are you referring to leaving it as it is? With the, the area of use in the registry?
Well, I guess my question is, do we want to leave open the possibility that other uses will be put in the registry in the future? And if you all haven't decided, that's fine, but if you had decided, I was thinking that, you know, I think some changes could be made to have a more focused discussion on the ordinance next time.
My sense had been that we were talking about lawn.
My sense was that we were talking outside of structures.
So, my comment would be, I think lawns are a good place to start, but I guess I'm curious to see what the, what the structural or textual changes you would make are to make it, you know, more focused around lawns, and I guess, you know, then how it would apply, if we're going to apply it more broadly, how, how that would work. Right now, the way we have language-structured tree care is excluded. The language is sort of silent on shrubbery. Sorry.
I mean, I think we would, well, one, I think it would open the question, would we need a waiver process if we're only talking about lawns? And I don't have the answer to that. I think we'd need feedback from, from interested parties, but I don't know that there's ever an issue with somebody's lawn that's so dire that they need a waiver. I don't know if, if, I mean, I think we could limit some of the exceptions. For example, we wouldn't need a tree exception if we're only talking about lawns. I think we could, it would just be a more concise ordinance. I'm not suggesting we limit it to lawns, but I thought I heard the council going in that direction. But if that decision hasn't been made, then-
That's, I'll just say, speaking for myself, that's the, that was the sense that I got from what I saw here, and when I heard the acting city manager talk about potential costs for the city in terms of enforcement, I heard a fairly clear distinction between lawns and going beyond that. And that would probably necessitate a much bigger financial impacts discussion. And that would probably necessitate a much bigger financial impacts discussion and potentially budget amendments and other things if it involved a position. So that kind of broadens things considerably. My sense was if we concentrated what we're doing on lawns, that was the place to start.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely, definitely. Results of that and forth.
Okay. So it sounds like there's a general sense that, to the extent that we can, we concentrate what we're doing on laws. And if that means changes to language that's in the draft, given that dichotomy between lawns and other things, it would be good to understand what that would mean to the draft. So if, I heard you saying, well, if it's just going to be lawns, you could remove some pieces that would clean it up.
Right. If we're only talking about lawns, I mean, one, I think it would be more clear, we could make it more clear from the outset what the ordinance is doing. Two, we wouldn't need all the exceptions. And three, we may not need the waiver application process.
So I think it would be good to know what that looks like.
And ideally have it in time for the Committee on the Environment-
Right.
-to be able to look at that draft enough in advance of their June 10th meeting, that that's the draft that they could respond to.
Okay. And then, so I would suggest that any of us who have kind of editorial edits, comments, that we should get them to the city attorney as he revises. Is that, is that the way, is that the way staff wants to go?
I just-
Okay. I just, I want to make sure. I don't want somebody saying, wait a minute. Any other questions, any other clarifications?
I'm just a little confused. Are we deferring to the Committee on the Environment? Do they have the final say if we move forward or not?
No.
It's just for their input.
Yes, for their input. Okay. So the direction is for the city attorney to make some changes to the draft. We'll give our inputs, and hopefully we'll have something that will be ready to give to the Committee on the Environment in time for their June 10th meeting so that they can have input as well. Which may necessitate us at least looking at it before June 10th.
Yeah, and I think you want to get it to the committee soon so they can meet it.
Yeah, right. Okay. Your turn.